Regular work session meeting, and so this will be our last formal meeting during the month of March. We'll talk more about future meetings a little bit later on in our program. Before I talk about a couple of things we need to be reminded of, since this is considered to be a remote meeting, I'm going to see if our Assistant Town Clerk, Ms. Ashley Knotts, would call the roll for us.
Mayor Marshburn?
Yeah, I'm present.
Mayor Proton Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much. We have our full slate of officials here tonight, so welcome to you all. As you know, and for the benefit of those who may be listening or looking in via media, this meeting is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Sessions Law 2020-3. I remind council, whenever a council member cannot be seen on the screen, that member will identify him or herself by name prior to asking questions, participating in deliberations, making motions, or proposing amendments, and voting. So be aware of those items if you will. So at this point, council, if you will, turn your attention to our first item. We have on our agenda tonight five regular items in one closed session. So if you're prepared, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can we adopt the agenda?
Okay. It's properly laid and segmented by Ms. Behringer, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So any questions about the agenda before we vote? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll for approval of the agenda.
Mayor Proton Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knotts, and thank you, council members. We'll get right into our agenda, and the first item there, as you can see, is Item C under Discussion and Reports. And tonight, we'll be hearing from our HR Director, Mr. BD Sekler, and Mr. Paul Snyder, a gentleman we have heard from on other occasions in regards to a health renewal presentation. So at this point, I will recognize Mr. Sekler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, good evening, council members. I don't know that Mr. Snyder is on the line with us, but I will go ahead. I will apologize a little bit in advance. Without him here, we had rehearsed how we were approved, so some of the slides he was going to speak to, I will do my best to speak to those as well. But I am excited tonight to be here with you. We met back in, I believe it was the end of January, and shared with you some of our plans with regards to how we were going to move forward. And I would like tonight to share with you some of our recommendations that we would like to make for our benefits plan for fiscal year 21. Starting off, I think this slide is pretty good news. For the third consecutive year in a row, we have received a rate reduction in our health plan with Aetna. We are recommending no changes in costs associated with our dental plan. We will also be talking tonight about a recommendation to add a new vision plan, which would be a voluntary, and to our benefits offerings. There'll be no changes with regards to our life and disability service. There'll be no changes to our CORA and flexible spending administration. We do have a rate increase with regards to our retiree medical Part D of 11.4%, and I will talk to the detail of that in a few moments. And we're also looking at a retiree Medicare supplement increase of 2.1%, and I will speak to that as well. The first thing, as I mentioned in my high-level summary, for the third consecutive year, we have realized a 5.5% decrease in our premium costs with no benefits changes. We are making a recommendation to maintain the 100% health contribution, and that would include all the included expenses. We're also recommending that we continue the 35.1% contribution that the town makes for our dependent premiums as well. We're making the recommendation to continue to offer the dual-option health care plan. We're recommending that we stay with our traditional plan, which is a higher option with a lower out-of-pocket cost, but a little bit higher premium cost. And we're also recommending continuing with the Choice Plan, which is a plan that we implemented two years ago, which is a lower option with higher out-of-pocket costs but lower premium costs. And just as a reminder, the premium cost is determined partly by the out-of-pocket cost. The lower the out-of-pocket cost in general, the higher the premium cost will be. The recommendation that we are making, and I will go into some detail in this in just a moment, is for the Choice Plan, we are recommending a moderate increase in the Choice Plan out-of-pocket cost, which will further reduce premium costs for the Choice Plan, but significantly reduces the employee contributions for dependent coverage, and that becomes roughly a 20.5% decrease. Let me slide out of the presentation slide here.
BD, are you able to hear me? This is Paul.
Yes, hi, Paul. Thank you for being there.
Sure.
I am going to get out of this slide, Paul, and I am going to... There we go. I am going to open up... Let's see. I have lost my way. I had all this set up. I can't seem to find where we had the... How do I get... Yes. Paul, if you don't mind, if you could talk through with council, compare the benefit options between the traditional, the Choice Plan, and then the recommended Choice Plan, and then if you don't mind, also talking about the premium cost as well.
I sure will. Thank you, BD. Good evening. For the benefit of a couple of council members that are newer and maybe had not seen the health plan and our presentation about it in the past, I'd like to mention that the Town of Garner Health Plan is, in many ways, a typical health insurance benefit design, where we have co-payments for a large number of items. This would be a flat dollar amount that an employee might pay, for example, to see a doctor, and the employee would just play the fat of the flat dollar amount without having to pay an enormous amount out-of-pocket in the form of a deductible or some other out-of-pocket cost. Employees like the co-payments; they're usually very affordable, and the Town of Garner plans have lots of very good co-payment benefits for things like doctors, prescription drugs, the emergency room, and urgent care. Wonderful benefits that the employees enjoy. The plan also has a very typical feature, which is a deductible. The deductible applies to larger health plan services, things like inpatient hospital stays, things like the expensive diagnostic tests like MRIs and CAT scans, outpatient surgeries, things like that. You can think of them as the expensive things. First, an employee would have to pay a deductible. Once the deductible is met, then the insurance begins to pay at a percent. For some services, it's 80% the insurance pays. Depending on the network, the insurance might only pay 60%, leaving the balance percentage to the employee to pay as an out-of-pocket cost. So this is very typical kind of benefit design. You would expect, or you would see the same thing with municipal and county governments, not only across the state, but also across America. This is a common design. What is unique, or very unusual at least, to the Town of Garner benefit design, is that the Town of Garner is contracted with the Aetna Insurance Company, and the Aetna Insurance Company offers two networks in North Carolina that Town of Garner employees and their covered dependents can use. And one of those networks in particular, called the ACO Narrow Network, gets employees and their covered dependents very good, extra good benefits. The other network, called the POS Broad Network, it's a huge network, and it gets employees and their covered dependents good benefits, but not as good as the ACO Narrow Network benefits. For example, on the town's traditional plan, which is the benefit plan that the town employees have enjoyed for many, many years, there is a deductible of $750 on the ACO Narrow Network. Those are the providers like Duke and Wake Med in the area. It's $750, and an out-of-pocket maximum of only $2,250. These are amazingly low out-of-pocket amounts in this day and age. It is not uncommon to see deductibles of $2,500, out-of-pocket amounts of $6,000, which are, you know, hard for employees to afford nowadays. The Town of Garner's plan is so very far above average in that regard, with these low deductibles and low out-of-pocket maximums. The only problem is, as BD mentioned earlier, these low out-of-pocket costs result in higher premiums. In fact, the town has, when an employee completes their wellness requirements or voluntarily participates in the wellness program and meets those targeted goals, the town is paying the full cost, in a sense, for the health insurance. The employees enjoy those benefits and no paycheck deduction costs themselves. Where they do have paycheck deduction cost is for their dependents. And because this plan is such a fine plan, and it's such a low out-of-pocket cost and a high premium, it's very expensive for dependents. That's why the Choice Plan shown on this page on the right half of the screen was introduced two years ago. It has the exact same co-payment benefits as the traditional plan. The only differences lie in the gray shaded areas to do with a deductible and out-of-pocket maximum. So the Choice Plan, the current one, instead of having a $750 deductible for the ACO Narrow Network, has a $1,500 deductible. Instead of having a $2,250 out-of-pocket maximum in the ACO Narrow Network, it has a $3,000 out-of-pocket maximum. Still excellent benefits, far above average, just lower than the town's traditional plan benefits. And this results in a lower paycheck deduction cost for covering dependents, and it has attracted about 15 employees to choose, voluntarily choose, to enroll in the lower-cost Choice Plan, so that their dependent coverage is lower, and so that they might better afford their health care for their family. Human Resources never receives complaints about the benefits that the health plan provides because they are so excellent. Even the Choice Plan with its higher out-of-pocket cost is still regarded as an excellent plan. Where Human Resources has been receiving complaints over the years, and understandably so, is that the cost for covering dependents is very high. The Choice Plan was a good move in the right direction, and we believe that there is room to move further. BD, if you could switch to the next page. What we propose is that we are going to change the Choice Plans' out-of-pocket costs a little at renewal effect of July 1st, from a $1,500 deductible to the ACO Narrow Network to a $2,500 deductible, from a $3,000 out-of-pocket to a $5,000 out-of-pocket. And this is all designed to get the cost down for covering dependents. And the co-payments will remain the same. The only thing that will be changing is the deductible and the out-of-pocket maximum. And BD, are you able to show that cost on the next page? There we go. And you can keep sliding down, BD. Thank you. So we see the renewal options. The traditional plan has a negative 5.5% renewal, which is wonderful. BD talked about how that is the third year in a row we've had a rate decrease. For those council members who are new, you might have heard that years ago, we had a tremendous, a couple of years of rate increases as a result of just some terrible lock and some high-cost claimants on our health plan. And for the past three years, the rates have been decreasing as those bad claims have faded into the past. So we have a 5.5% decrease for the Choice Plan. If we do not make any changes to the benefits, the recommendation is shown in the bottom row. This is the higher out-of-pocket cost Choice Plan, and the town is very generous with the Choice Plan. The town provides the same contribution for the employees who choose the Choice Plan as they do for employees that choose the traditional plan, so that employees, it's almost like an extra momentum that helps them afford their dependent coverage. For example, on employee and spouse coverage, if the employee enrolls in the traditional plan, the town will provide funding of $1,213.34 per month toward that coverage on the traditional plan, but that leaves the employee to pay $720.80 a month for that traditional plan coverage for the spouse. The town generously provides the same $1,213.34 for the employee to enroll the spouse toward the cost of the Choice Plan coverage. If we don't make any benefit changes, the employee with the 5.5% lower cost for the spouse will pay $593.67 starting July 1st for that spouse coverage. If we do make the recommended benefit changes, that same employee would pay only a $509.53 for that spouse coverage per month. That's a 20.5% decrease, and that, we think, might be the right balance. We think that the Choice Plan was a move in the right direction two years ago. We think that this 20.5% reduction in employee monthly cost for the Choice Plan with the recommended benefit decreases is enough to help employees better cover their spouses and dependents more affordably without raising the out-of-pocket cost in the event of medical services are needed too high. We think we might be moving in the direction of the right balance. The real task will be to see how many employees enroll in this recommended renewal with the lower cost. We expect to see an increase, and we look forward to the employees' feedback after this plan is introduced. BD, is there anything more that you would like to say about these two exhibits before we switch back to the presentation?
No, Paul. I think that was good. However, I think I will stop here at this point, because once we move on from these slides, we'll be moving into the dental plan. So if it's appropriate at this point, I may stop and see if council has any specific questions about the health plan before we move forward.
Thank you both, and so we'll see if council wants to pose questions at this juncture. I will hold mine at this point. Council members, Mr. Matthews, do you have anything?
Not at this time, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Mr. Vance?
No questions. It is I.
Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, the current plan, the current Choice Plan, is that still available?
The current Choice Plan, if we go with the recommendation that we're making, the current Choice Plan would go away. We would simply, when all is said and done, we will have one traditional plan and one Choice Plan.
Right. So is it still possible to keep the current Choice Plan, I guess is my question, versus moving to the recommended plan?
Yes, sir. It is possible to do that. We're recommending with the plan that has the changes in the out-of-pocket cost, but if council chooses, we could remain with the same Choice Plan as we have currently today.
I guess my other question on page 15, where it breaks down the plans, there's a breakdown between individual and family. So is individual defined as employee-only, and family, does that include all the other plans, like spouse and children and family?
So we have different tiers. So we have employee-only, we have employee and spouse, spouse and children, and then family.
So the previous slide, the one above, that summarizes the benefits and the co-pays, yeah, that one. So at the very top, where it says network, and then it has annual deductible and out-of-pocket minimum, and it says individual/family. Does family include all those other tiers?
I can answer that question, BD, if you'd like me to.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, family in that position that you're asking about is actually a ceiling maximum, so that a family would never pay more than the listed amount. It would include all the other tiers beyond employee-only coverage. So even if you just had one child covered, you could be assured that you would never pay more as you and your child than the listed amount for family on this chart. It's meant to be a ceiling protection, so that in the event of a catastrophic episode for a whole family, they wouldn't be financially devastated.
So when I'm looking at the current plan on the other slide, I see that the total... I love that you've broken this down by the number of employees that are using each plan or each plan's implementation. I see that the total cost under the existing plan is $207,022, and then the recommended Choice Plan is $195,533, which isn't a big difference, but when I look at the number of employee, employee children, and family, it seems like, you know, it's a big jump to have that out-of-pocket and that annual deductible jump from 3,000 to 5,000, and the out-of-pocket maximum jump to 6 to 10. That's a lot of, if something happens, that's a lot for a family. So I just, I kind of, a little worried about that, in that it doesn't cost the town that much more to keep... You talk about financial catastrophe. That seems like that's a, if something happens, it could hit a family pretty hard. But that's the only comment I have at this time. We can move forward.
If I may speak to the point, because it's a good point. What I would like to emphasize is that although there's a trick in the numbers on that page that made it look like the Choice Plan is less expensive for the town than the traditional plan, in fact, this is just because we had two employees who have other insurance or other reasons, but they voluntarily chose to take the lesser of the plans, the Choice Plan, as employee-only coverage, even though they could have had the traditional plan for, you know, no paycheck deduction. Because their cost is only seven, would only be $733.52 on the recommended Choice Plan, that's where the funding difference comes. Another way to say this is that if it weren't for those two employees trying to save the town a little bit of money, the funding amount for the Choice Plan is the same for the town as it is for the traditional plan. The town is very generously giving the employees all this money that they would have been able to spend on the traditional plan, so that they could spend it on the Choice Plan with its lower monthly premiums. The result is a lower cost for the dependents, for those employees that choose the Choice Plan. So we can expect that the recommended renewal for the Choice Plan will not impact the town's funding, but rather the employees' bottom line. And the employees voluntarily choose whether to enroll in the traditional plan or the Choice Plan, and they weigh themselves that, a very good point about the extra risk of the out-of-pocket, the increased out-of-pocket in the recommended Choice Plan renewal, against those savings that they have in their paychecks each month. And we leave it to them to decide what is the right move for their budget and their family.
That's my only comment. Thank you.
You're good, Mr. Dillinger.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I've recognized Mr. Singleton yet for questions or comments.
No, we're getting ready to put a test to the traditional plan, the POS Broad Network, because it's January 1st, we paid $6,000 out-of-pocket paying bill, so we'll see if we get to $8,000 if it stops. I'm holding my breath.
Okay.
Serious, my wife's surgery last October. I just added them up real quick. I might have missed one. It's spread at $6,000. Plus, I mean, for the family, and we know the family plans are costly, because, you know, if you take, the salary we get, I pay about $650 or $660 a month, so we're at $16,500 plus the $6,000, so that's a lot, as Damian mentioned. Any family, doesn't matter who you are, that's a lot of money out-of-pocket. We all recognize that anyway. That's where there aren't many people signing up on the family plan. It's very expensive. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I may have asked this last year, for some reason it comes back to my mind. Do we have a methodology such as a survey or questionnaire that employees might get to respond to in terms of their like for or dislike for the current plan, or is it based more, I guess, in terms of, you know, how many employees sign up for specific plans? Does that question make sense to you, Mr. Sekler?
It does, Mayor. And yes, we've never done a formal or traditional survey. I know, for example, the police department has done an internal department survey, and they have asked questions about benefits, including health benefits. We have not done a survey specifically with regards to the medical benefits or the health benefits. I think it's, a lot of it is based on what we see people signing up for, just as Mr. Singleton had mentioned. We don't have a lot of people in the family plan, most likely because of the very high costs associated with that.
Right. Okay. Okay.
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah. Somebody else?
Rodney, Town Manager Rodney. We have done surveys in the past, and health insurance ranked pretty high as one of the more desirable benefits. The cost was an issue. I think most everyone was satisfied with the benefits that came with it, the care that came with it, and the deductibles and those type of things. And we did look at benefits a few years ago, and it still ranked pretty high. And if I may, on the Choice Plan, as I understand it, you will say on your deductible for the year, when you add up, I'm sorry, when you add up all your premium payments, you say it is higher out-of-pocket, but they're pretty much made to balance out each other. So that thousand you save in premium, if you have an incident, you may have to pay that thousand in the out-of-pocket. But the benefit is, if you don't have any incidents, hospitalization, you'll save that thousand dollars. So it's meant to, it's meant to help the employees that doesn't use it or doesn't have a hospitalization. So it should be to the benefit of the employee, and if they do have to, it should pretty much balance out with the previous higher premium one. And I may not have done a good job explaining it, so you can clean it up, Paul, if you need to, but it should balance out when you look at the numbers. If you look at...
I mean, I guess my only comment is always balance out if nothing happens. I mean, I, I guess my only comment is always balance out if nothing happens.
Well, you're, no, I'm saying you're going to save though. Save for what the current one is.
But you won't if something happens.
Well, Rodney's point is if, for example, on employee and spouse coverage, the deductible will increase to twenty-five hundred dollars under the recommended renewal for the choice, which is a, a thousand dollars more than the current fifteen hundred dollar deductible on the choice. When you look at the paycheck deduction savings, the paycheck deduction savings are one thousand ten dollars for the year. So the idea is a deductible service comes along once in a while. A lot of times your services are just copayment services without any deductible. So there's a certain likelihood or unlikelihood that you'll even pay a deductible, but there's a certainty that you'll save a hundred and, excuse me, a thousand ten dollars a year o- out of your paycheck for the employee and spouse coverage. When you look at it from an actuarial standpoint, it evens out. We leave it to the employees to decide whether they're willing to take that guaranteed savings of reduced paycheck cost versus the increased risk of out of pocket cost. We know it evens out, but they get to make a personal choice and, uh, that, you know, that's a good thing. We're not limiting them in any way, we're giving them another option.
My la- my last comment, Mr. Mayor, and we can move on, is, you know, we're still in the middle in the throes of a pandemic. And so the, there is a higher likelihood than normal that there may be one of those types of circumstances to come up that are going to cause you to eat into your deductible and out of pocket. But that's my last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think it's worth noting that I think the town has consistently, and I guess the town manager could say how long this has been, but, and maybe it's consistent with what other towns do, but the town has always paid the insurance cost for individual employees if they don't take other plans. We've been able to consistently do that even through what I would call lean years and not so lean years. But obviously, when, when other members of the family are insured, that's when, that's when out of pocket expense and, and/or the premiums increase. Am I right on that, Mr. Manager? We, we've been able to maintain the employee coverage, for the employee alone for, for a goodly number of years?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Even during the high cost days that we had with the previous carrier. And that is a typical municipal benefit that you pretty much find anywhere you go. Where the town has been really gracious is when the family costs went up, the town helped to absorb some of that, so over the years.
Of course, it's important to note that when the, over the four-year period, when the cost of the insurance rose about a million dollars, we went from paying to dependents thirty percent to thirty-three percent to now it's, I believe it's thirty-five point one percent. So the town, when, when it was coming out of pocket increasing for the employees, the town did increase how much they paid for dependents. So that made, that made a big difference.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, then. Okay, if you're through here, we'll go to the next item, which is it dental coverage?
Yep, we're going to move on to the dental coverage next. I, I will just make one comment with regards to the health insurance. At some point, whether it be tonight or through discussions moving forward, we just need to give council's pleasure with regards to whether we stay with the current choice plan or whether we move to the recommended choice plan with the lower premiums, but the higher out of pocket costs. That will be a decision that council will need to make to allow us to move forward with regards to the next steps in the benefits renewal process. So I'll just put that out there that at some point, we will need a decision from council whether to accept our recommendation or to stay with the current choice plan. So I just wanted to say that before we moved on to the, to the dental coverage.
So do I hear you correctly? It's anticipated that council would, would weigh in on that this evening as opposed to us putting it, well, I guess we would, as opposed to just putting on a consent agenda and, and having it approved that way?
Yes, I hope would be that if, if, if we could get decisions tonight, that would be helpful. We could then place the entire presentation and all the decisions that might be made tonight on the consent agenda for the next meeting on Monday evening. However, that's not convenient. Then we would just need to reconvene to get those decisions, which would then allow us to move forward with the next steps in the open enrollment process.
Okay, thank you BD. I, I guess, I guess we could ask, I could ask council to, at this point on this segment, to, to state a position on this? Or do you want to go on with the rest of the presentation before we do that?
We can move forward with the rest of the presentation and then have that discussion at the end.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So I will move on then to the dental coverage. Just want to share with you, as I, as I said in the executive summary, that we're not recommending any increase in the premium equivalent. We are self-insured with regards to our dental and our claims loss ratio currently is about seventy-nine percent. We do our administration through Delta Dental and we have a three-year rate guarantee on the Delta Dental. What I'm going to do now is ask, um, ask Paul if he would, just to talk a little bit about our dental plan. And then we can also share the costs of what the dental plan currently is and what they will be based on our recommendation going forward.
Okay, thank you BD. The dental plan benefits that the town has are a standard set of benefits commonly seen. They include typical features like one hundred percent coverage for diagnostic and preventive services, you know, no deductible, no copayment, one hundred percent coverage for the important things like routine oral examinations, cleanings, x-rays, fluoride treatments, things like that to maintain oral health. Additionally, the town's plan covers a brush biopsy, which is an oral cancer screening that dentists are in a particularly good position to conduct. So you would almost think of it as like a medical kind of screening. But in fact, dentists do it and your dental plan from Delta Dental covers it in full. And when we say covers it, we should remind ourselves that the self-funded nature of the town's dental plan means really that the town is paying for it. The insurance company is really not covering anything. They're just making the claim determinations, sending the checks off to the dentist, collecting the monies from the town. The town is really behind the scenes paying for everything for this self-funded dental plan. That is in contrast to the fully insured medical insurance, the health insurance that we have from the Aetna Insurance Company, where Aetna is paying for everything and charging a premium. With the self-funded dental plan, the town is paying for everything and paying only a modest administration fee to Delta Dental for things like customer service, claims payment, and reporting. The dental coverage has a fifty-dollar individual annual deductible, but it only comes into play should you need basic or major services. Basic services include things like fillings. Major services, like the name would suggest, are the big ticket items like periodonics, root canals, crowns, and onlays, things like that. The major services are covered at fifty percent after deductible. Basic services are covered at eighty percent after the deductible. And there's a maximum annual benefit of one thousand dollars per year per person. The family would pay no more than three deductibles. It's a hundred and fifty dollars total for any year. And the town even has an orthodontic benefit. It's limited to dependents, so children up to age nineteen. It's a thousand dollar lifetime benefit to help pay for orthodontchuck. The current costs are shown. We have a significant enrollment in the dental plan. People can, or employees can enroll their dependents in the dental plan even if they're not enrolled in the health plan. So we have a hundred and eighty-six total employees enrolled. And the cost forecast or the premium equivalent forecast is for a flat or a rate hold July first, two thousand twenty-one. And that would result in, uh, in the town's bottom line for annual budgeting for dental of about sixty-nine thousand dollars total.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you BD.
I am going to change back now and continue on with the presentation. And what I'd like to do now is share with you a new benefit that we're recommending, which is a vision plan. This is something that we have talked about in the past. We have been asked by employees about this. And so our town currently does not have eyewear benefits for our staff members. We feel that the eyewear benefits are a good part of our overall health plan. The eyewear benefits are especially important clearly for employees that are operating town vehicles and equipment. We're proposing a new vision plan with eyewear benefits and vision exam benefits for all employees. We are recommending that if this new vision plan is adopted, it would be a voluntary plan, so it would be a hundred, hundred percent paid by staff. And it would be a fully insured plan with an organization called Superior Vision. The annual vision exam benefit would be for a ten dollar copay, a hundred and fifty dollar contract lens coverage on an annual basis, eyeglass lens benefit for a twenty-five dollar copay, biennial, biennial, one hundred and fifty dollar eyeglass frame coverage. And there are additional discounts for lens options and treatments. If we were to adopt this new vision plan, the cost would be, as you see them there, the employee only cost, these are on a monthly basis, would be nine dollars and fifty-six cents. And for a family, it would be thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. We, we believe that adding this vision plan to our overall benefits program would be very beneficial and it would, it would round out our overall benefits coverage. Our life and disability insurance, which is currently through a company called Reliance Standard, we currently have a two-year rate guarantee through June of two thousand and twenty-three. There's no change in premium costs and Reliance Standard provides us with our life insurance, our accidental death and dismemberment, and our short-term disability benefits for our staff members. Our Cobra and Flexible Spending Administration is provided through an organization called ISOL. We have a three-year rate hold guarantee through two thousand twenty-two out of those costs. So we're not, we're not looking at any changes in our administrative costs. And as I mentioned a moment ago, ISOL currently administers our Cobra and Flexible Spending Administration. Retirements Care Part D, which is our prescription drug coverage, regretfully, it has gone up by eleven point four percent in terms of the premiums. To put this in perspective, we changed from Blue Cross Blue Shield to United Healthcare in January of two thousand twenty. And even with this eleven point four percent increase, we're still twenty-three point seven percent lower in our premium costs than we would have been had we stayed with Blue Cross Blue Shield. These are individual insurance policies, not group policies. They have the same premium, however, regardless of the retiree's age or gender. The second plan that we provide to our retirees is a primary medical supplement and that is for hospital and medical coverage. That regretfully has gone up by two point one percent in terms of the premium costs. That has a renewal effective date of May first of this year. And these policies are individual insurance policies and they have various premium terms based on the retiree's age or gender. We are fortunate enough, through the provider that we use, that they provide us a service called list billing, which allows all of the individual insurance policies to be combined in one bill. It makes it far easier for us to make those payments each month. A timeline, as we talked a few moments ago, we are, we are hoping that we can get decisions from you and those decisions can be placed on the consent agenda for next Monday, April fifth meeting. That will allow us to move forward in our timeline to meet our open enrollment period, which we anticipate will be May third through May twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one. All of the changes that the staff makes during that open enrollment period would then become effective at the start of the new fiscal year on July first, two thousand twenty-one. So that is the end of our presentation tonight. I will stop at this point and see if anyone has any particular questions about any of this presentation or any other thoughts at this point in time.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, thank you BD and also Mr. Snyder for the presentation. So council, we'll just kind of go around the ring here and see if you have questions or comments. I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Great presentation. As insurance, it is what it is and man, I'll tell you, it's, it's hard to keep up with sometimes. But I appreciate what's been presented and I think that, uh, hopefully it's going to be good for all of our employees as well as the town has been stepping up, filling those gaps whenever necessary. So anytime we can get reductions, Paul, it's a good thing. And so, so just keep, keep on reducing, we like that.
Okay, and Mr. Dellinger?
You're on mute, you're on mute, Dave.
I did it, I did it, I did it. It's like the first or second time I've ever done this. I'm glad for the dental, I like the idea of the vision coverage, I think that's really great. I still have, I have real reservations about the new choice plan. There are only fifteen, looks like fifteen employees on the choice plan now. And with the, the change between the traditional and the new choice, the, the monthly difference is large. It is significant. But what I don't want people to have to do is to make a, that month-to-month decision when it could result in higher costs. We have a lot of police officers on payroll. They are in harm's way all the time, whether it's COVID or other traffic responses and other medical stuff they respond to. And so what I, I don't want to see people, more people moving from a very good traditional plan into the choice plan on those month-to-month considerations when the consequences could be very significant to their families if something happens. Based on that, the delta between keeping the traditional plan that we have and the choice plan that we have is not as great. So people still have the choice, but they're not being, having to make... It balances their choice a little bit better if we keep the current plan, current choice plan. That, that's my opinion. I just really have concerns about that new choice plan and, and more people moving over to those higher deductibles and out of pocket expenses. It's a slippery slope where if more people go over there, then you've got more employees that are at risk for medical issues and problems. Like you said at the very beginning, we have a very, very, very good traditional plan. And so I think we, we want as many employees to stay in that as, as that want to. So again, I, I, I think we should just keep our, our existing choice plan and not go with the re- recommended one. It's not much of a cost difference to the town either, so that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Let me see, I don't believe I have asked Mr. Vance yet.
Oh, I have no question.
Okay, and Ms. Singleton, did I get to you?
No, sir, the, the new vision plan, so people who are currently on the vision plan will automatically kick into the new vision plan, correct?
It wouldn't automatically kick into that. That would be a voluntary choice that they can make to select that plan and drop any other vision plan that they might be in.
Okay, but if they're currently in the town's vision plan, if we get to this new vision plan, would it automa- it wouldn't automatically go to it? You have to, during the signup period in May, you have to sign up for the new vision plan.
Yes, you would have to sign up for the new vision plan during the open enrollment period in May.
Okay, I understand what Mr. Dellinger is saying, but you have the risk of getting current every time you get in your car and you get on the road. The new choice plan, you know, a thousand and ten dollars at twenty-six pay periods, thirty-nine dollars a month. It don't sound like much, so it's a thousand and ten dollars at the end of the year. So you're putting more money in your employees' pockets. That's the risk of insurance, what choice they pick. And it's, it's just a risk, it's, it's a guessing game and it's a risk. I mean, as again I told you, my wife's surgery is all under Rex and we're out of network. So we're made twice as much out of pocket. That's just the way it is. As you were doctors are with, it's just not a change. So I understand that, but anytime you can put more money in your employees' pocket, I think that's a benefit. And if they save that $1,000 and had to have a deductible, then it could be there. So I understand his points, but I'll go with the recommendation that the staff has made.
Okay, I believe everybody's had a chance to weigh in, so...
Mr. Mayor, may I comment, please? I just want to make sure we're clear on the vision plan. We don't technically have a vision plan now. There are a couple of vision benefits in our regular insurance, so it's not a plan. I think it offers exams for free, and there might be a small amount for some hardware, but I don't... No, there's no, okay. So that's not really a plan. It just gives you the exams. And that would, if you choose to do nothing, you would still have that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
One last comment, Mr. Mayor. So if there's any way to get information on what the staff prefers, because they still have a choice between the traditional plan and the choice plan that would still save them that $100 or plus a month. The real difference we're looking at is the difference between the two choice plans and what that savings is. So if you look at the individual, it's $30. So there's only a $30 difference between the two choice plans, yet one has a really low deductible and out-of-pocket, and the other one has a really high one. And if you go down the line, there's like a $60 difference for employee and children per month. So that comes out to, you know, your $600, $700 a month. But you can, it's still $100 cheaper than the traditional plan. So, but again, there's a huge jump in those out-of-pocket expenses. So it's not comparing the traditional and the choice. It's comparing the two choice plans. And there's not that much difference between the two of those in the cost to the town or the employee, but the benefits are much greater in the event that something occurs. So, and I guess my other question was with manager, is there any way between now and next week to get a feel for what? I mean, I don't, there's not been a survey, so I don't know what people are thinking. And it's their choice. I agree. It's their choice. But we have to help, we have to give them two choices.
Mr. Dellinger, we could certainly do it. It would be difficult within a week to try and survey everyone. That's in essence what the open enrollment period would do. It would either prove or disprove our theory with regards to who enrolled in that program. Two years ago, we didn't have the choice plan, and 100% of our staff had to be in the traditional plan. When we opened the choice plan, we now have roughly 15 people that have chosen that. Our belief is that if we went with the recommendation that we're making, we would see an increase, I don't know by how many, but our belief is that we would see an increase in the number of people that would opt into the choice plan. And what we're trying to do is incrementally figure out where that sweet spot is with regards to the lower costs for the premiums in the choice plan versus the higher premium costs in the traditional plan. And it's very difficult, other than going around and asking every individual, and I don't know that they would be able to give us an answer currently, which is why we have the open enrollment period by which we give them that opportunity to consider. We educate them through open enrollment meetings, and then they ultimately make that choice for themselves and their families with regards to whether they want to go with the traditional plan with the lower out-of-pocket costs or the choice plan with the lower premium costs.
Mr. Sackler, could you clarify for me? Well, I think, I mean, we're on a timeframe here. What's sort of the drop-dead date for these recommendations to either go into effect or not in terms of, you know, the premium plans and when they start?
Yeah, so third is our tentative date to start open enrollment. So we would probably need to back that up by two or three weeks to prepare for all of the materials that need to go into the open enrollment presentations. All of the changes that are made during open enrollment are then entered into the system, and they become effective on July 1st of 2021. So that's our timeframe working against to have this set up.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, yeah?
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry. You know, we feel that more people will probably enroll with the new choice plan just because the premiums are lower. Now, what we can do, we probably can't survey the whole everybody, but we may could talk to some that are on the current choice plan and kind of let them look at the new plan and see if they would like that better. That may be compromised to doing a full-out blown survey. But the way I'd look at the math, if you go to the hospital, the cost is the same. If you don't, you end up saving $1,000 for the year. Under the old plan, you have no mechanism to save that extra $1,000.
Okay. Well, council, yeah, I know there's some diverse opinions, and that's quite okay. So the recommendation is to approve, to consider and approve the staff's recommendation and put this on a consent agenda. Suppose it could be delayed, but not much if we're working on a tight timeframe, as I understand it. But so I, at this point, would probably ask for, if we need to formally vote, I guess we probably do on this issue. Is there anything else, Mr. Sackler, that we need to consider before that?
Nope, that would be the one item that I would need, I would need some direction on.
Okay, okay. So council, what say you as relates to the action that is recommended?
The move that we recommend, we accept the staff's recommendations regarding the suggested plans as we move forward. Also ask staff to poll the people who are currently on the choice plan just to get some feedback so we can have that between now and next month.
Second. Okay, you have a, excuse me, motion made promptly and a second by Mr. Matthews, I believe it was.
Oh, premiums.
So any other comment, question, and we're going to vote.
The motion is to put on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
No, I didn't clarify that name. I can say that, or I can say we can have it as an agenda, a discussion on it if you'd like.
We can put it on the consent agenda, and if we need to discuss it, we can pull it.
Okay, that's all. No problem.
With the understanding, as you said, Mr. Singleton, the second part of that was a polling of those who have a choice plan and to see what response we get there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, council, with the motion properly made and seconded, I'm going to ask our assistant town clerk to call the role on this motion. Vote aye if you approve. Vote no if you disapprove.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. Obviously, the motion passes with unanimous vote. And so it will appear before you again, I believe, at our next meeting next week.
That is correct.
So be prepared at that meeting if you want to. It'll be on there, I think, as consent, as has been noted, it can be pulled for further discussion depending on what further information might come forward between then and then.
And we'll get any information from the folks that are on the current choice plan.
Okay. All right, does that cover everything from your perspective, Mr. Sackler? Will you move to the next item?
It does. Mayor and council, thank you very much for your time and your consideration tonight. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Interesting discussion. Still says insurance always is a challenging topic, I guess, for many of us. At this point, we will move to item two on the agenda, and I believe our presenter is Ms. Gabby Lawler. Wake BRT Southern Corridor update and LPA selection. So Ms. Lawler, if you're with us, the floor is yours.
Yep, can everybody hear me? Yes. And let me just share my screen.
Well, at least we know it's seven o'clock.
Yeah. Do we need someone to mute at this point? Okay, I don't hear the bell anymore, but get ready.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, mayor, members of the town council. I'm here tonight to discuss the Wake Bus Rapid Transit Southern Corridor, and I'm accompanied by Het Patel, she's the senior transit planner at the city of Raleigh. So in just a few moments, I'll hand this over to Het, and he'll provide a quick background and update on work that has been completed on the Southern Corridor since the last time that we were presented to council, which was in July. And so this includes city of Raleigh council action and NCDOT coordination for the, to explore the feasibility of the Wilmington extension at Tryon Road. And then Het will hand it back over to me, and I'll go back over, I'll go over some considerations to keep in mind as council makes the locally preferred alternative or LPA selection. So I will hand this over to Het now.
All right, thanks, Gabby. Good evening, mayor and town council members. I'm glad to be back in front of you guys on the presentation for the Southern Corridor. Hope everyone's safe and doing well with this pandemic. We typically always like to start our Wake Transit Plan presentations with this slide that talks about the four big moves of the Wake Transit Plan. It identified, you know, connecting the region, connecting all Wake communities, providing frequent, reliable urban transit, and providing greater access to transit. Big move number three there, which talks about providing frequent, reliable urban transit, is where the Bus Rapid Transit projects lie. And so the Southern Corridor for BRT is what we will be focusing our presentation on today. Next slide. So the Southern Corridor connects Go Raleigh Station in downtown Raleigh to Perser Drive through Garner Station Boulevard in Town of Garner. We've presented before in early 2020 with numerous alternatives that came out of the major investment study. Since then, we've had a lot of analysis that has gone into the alignment work, and we've had some work that has reduced the number of alignments that are currently under consideration. I did want to highlight, I did want to highlight that if needed, Garner and City of Raleigh can make independent decisions on this southern section of the Southern Corridor, and there would be opportunities to connect those into one singular alignment that we move forward with in design. Next slide. So overall, I'd like to kind of briefly go through the timeline for the LPA selection process that we began in January 2020. In February and March, we had two kickoff meetings, one in Raleigh, one in Garner. And we presented some of the public engagement feedback from those meetings to the Town of Garner during the July 2020 work session, along with some of the analysis that had been completed to date and some considerations, including trade-offs between the different alignments. From that point, there were still some unanswered questions on the southern section, but we had a pretty clear understanding of what was the staff recommendation on the northern section, and it would have helped us to eliminate some of the alignment alternatives. So in October 2020, City of Raleigh council took action on the northern section and identified South Wilmington Street as the preferred route. And I'll kind of highlight that a little bit more on the next slide. And that was presented to the Town of Garner as a manager's update during the October 2020 work session for the town. And towards the end of last year, early this year, we have been working with NCDOT on the traffic impact analysis for the Wilmington extension, specifically looking at the Tryon Road intersection, because that was one of the unanswered questions that we had in July 2020 that we needed to basically figure out before we could present a technical recommendation for the southern section of the corridor. Once we have a locally preferred alternative adopted sometime this spring and summer, we would begin the 0% to 30% design and enter the FTA's project development process in the summer of this year. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the northern section, there were multiple alternatives, including South Saunders and South Wilmington Street. In October 2020, City of Raleigh council took action to select South Wilmington Street as the preferred route. And so that leaves us with that gray alignment on the northern section, and then two potential options for the southern portion, with that being South Wilmington Street extension, which is that dotted line going into Garner Station Boulevard or the Fayetteville Road option. Next slide. And so in looking at the southern section, one of the things that we needed to do was coordinate with NCDOT on the crossing of the South Wilmington Street extension at Tryon Road. There were some unknowns at the point when we last presented in July. And so we wanted to complete this TIA and get some feedback from NCDOT. And what we have since found out is there are various design alternatives that could be feasible at this intersection. And a feasible alternative currently has been identified with NCDOT, Town of Garner, and City of Raleigh that would not require the intersection to be grade separated. So that way, there would be less impacts on either side of that intersection for the property owners, as well as providing crossing for the Bus Rapid Transit lanes, as well as potentially some general purpose movements. So I'm not going to go into too much detail on what that alternative is, but I'd just like to say that in that coordination effort, we feel comfortable saying that an intersection design is feasible that does not require grade separation, and that additional design and analysis would be conducted as part of the BRT 30% design work that we would initiate in the summer of this year. And then, you know, at this point, there's additional considerations that Gabby will get into from a development perspective, as well as present the staff recommendation for the southern section. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end if you guys have any. So I'll hand it over to Gabby.
Okay, thanks, Het. So as Het mentioned, I will walk us through some considerations from the development side. So for the Wilmington extension alternative, there is the possibility that the town would be responsible for a portion of the cost share. And this is because right-of-way acquisition and construction of general purpose lanes are not eligible for FTA reimbursement. And to explain what I mean on this graphic here to the right, so the red, I don't know if you can make it out very clearly, but the red that you see here indicates dedicated bus lanes, which is an expense that would be covered by FTA. The green is general purpose lanes, and the blue indicates mixed traffic. So the general purpose lanes is what we would potentially have to provide a cost share for. However, after coordinating with the development groups and property owners, staff is fairly confident that the town's potential cost share would be minimal. And so there are two main properties that would be directly impacted by the Wilmington extension alternative. The first one is the 601 Tryon Road parcel, which is highlighted here in the black line. And so this is just south of the Tryon Road, just south of Tryon Road to the east of Junction Boulevard. And off to the east, you see the 401 70 split. So the group developing plans for this site are aware of the Wake BRT Southern Corridor project. Staff has met with them a couple of times now and made them aware of the BRT project. Additionally, we've explained that the Wilmington extension is actually a recommendation in Garner's transportation plan. So that's recommended as a four-lane divided roadway. And as you know, when development comes in, they are required to either improve or to construct roadway recommendation that's identified in the plan that overlaps with their property. And so the development group is including their half of the extended roadway in their plans, and they are in support of the BRT project. I did want to note that the development group has not purchased the property yet, but they have put a substantial amount of work and money into developing the plans. So staff is fairly confident that they will go through with that purchase. And notably, the requirement to build their half of the road was not a deal breaker, as they're still advancing with plans for development on this site. And so I wanted to point out that, you know, some of the benefits here are that, under existing conditions without the extension, the 601 Tryon parcel would have, has very limited access. So this extension would actually help to improve access to the site. And the other positive note is that, you know, Town of Garner's potential cost share would be significantly reduced as a result of the site dedicating right-of-way and constructing their half of the roadway. So I just wanted to point out that this illustrated cross-section here shows what the cross-section could be for this portion of the extension. So it's, as I mentioned, the dedicated transit lanes which run in the center, and then they are separated from the general purpose lanes, which is open to all traffic. And this particular cross-section shows the inclusion of bike lanes, because the general public had expressed an interest for bicycle and pedestrian accommodations in whichever alternative winds up advancing.
Gabby, may I jump in real quick there, sorry?
No, sure.
I just wanted to add that you'd mentioned the transit lanes would be eligible for a federal reimbursement. The bicycle pedestrian infrastructure is also eligible for an FTA project. So really, from the cost perspective, it is only the general purpose lanes and the right-of-way for the general purpose lanes, which, again, as Gabby highlighted, through the development process for the town, that could be something that's acquired.
Sure, yeah, thanks for adding that, Het. So moving on to the second, the second property within Town of Garner's jurisdiction that would be directly impacted by the Wilmington Extension, and it is the North-South Station, which is located off of Garner Station Boulevard, and it's just to the south of the 601 Tryon parcel that we were just looking at. So staff has met with the owners of this property several times, starting from the beginning of the Wake BRT Southern Corridor project. And from the beginning, the owners have been, have expressed support and excitement for the BRT plans. They acknowledge the potential for development or redevelopment that the project could bring. The most recent time that we met with them, we showed them this image that I have here to the right, so that they could very clearly see how the Wilmington Extension would align and impact their property, just so that they're fully aware of what that would look like. And they still, you know, expressed support for it, and they expressed a confirmation of their willingness to dedicate right-of-way for the general purpose lanes going through their site, which is the green that you see here, those green lines. And so the actual construction of those lanes would be triggered by submitting an application for redevelopment. And so the Southern Corridor project kind of aligns with their vision for the site, because they also expressed an interest for redeveloping the site to something that might be more suited for the direction of market trends. Because as anybody who's familiar with this site is probably aware, that shopping plaza is underutilized, and that was the case even before the pandemic. So that group is interested in redeveloping their site when the time is right for that. And so again, you know, this means that the potential cost share for the town would be significantly reduced. And overall, whatever cost share the town is looking at would be minimal or potentially nothing, best-case scenario. And again, this is just the potential cross-section for what the configuration would look like along Garner Station Boulevard. As of right now, we're assuming that that would be, that it would be operating in mixed traffic. But again, this will be refined once we get into the zero to 30% design. So I wanted to point out a few long-range plans that are applicable and that point out some important factors that we should keep in mind. The first is the Southern Gateway Corridor Study, which was completed in 2017 by the City of Raleigh in conjunction with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so that study, the Southern Gateway, is referring to the Southern Gateway into the City of Raleigh, which included, you know, the very northern portion of Garner as you're transitioning into the City of Raleigh. And so that study supports the Wilmington Extension, both from a traffic operations and a development perspective. Speaking from, you know, traffic operations point of view, the study included plans for a more complete local and collector street system, which recommended Wilmington Extension, which parallels 70 and 401. And some of the benefits of that would be that it would take some of the burden off of the main thoroughfare, referring to 401, by reducing vehicle trips and conflicts. It would also create a more efficient transit routing option, because if you have the BRT running on the extension parallel to 401, it's obviously not the main thoroughfare, and it's a newly created road, so there would be less vehicle traffic that the BRT would be competing with, and therefore would operate more efficiently, which is the goal. And also, it would provide better bicycle and pedestrian opportunities, which, again, is something that the public has expressed a great interest in. So it would be a more comfortable and a safe alternative to 401, which is what we're, is what would be ideal. And so the second, the second plan that I wanted to point out is Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, which was completed in 2018. And so the Garner Forward Plan identified five opportunity sites within the Town of Garner, and Garner Station was one of them. And so the plan kind of expanded on the Southern Gateway Corridor Study and extended the vision for the redevelopment further south into Garner, which is what you see here. And this, of course, was, you know, just a very high-level rendering of what that could look like. It's a conceptual idea, it's not prescriptive, it's not meant to be taken literally. It's just showing the potential that there could be if that area was redeveloped. And so that vision called for an improved experience for drivers, pedestrians, and transit patrons. And that's what you see here in this rendering is, you know, the concept for, the concept for what that convergence of US 70 and US 401 could look like. So I just wanted to recap the factors that staff would like to highlight, and kind of the reasoning behind our technical recommendation that we would like Town Council to consider in their decision. And the first is that, as Het mentioned, the TIA confirmed that this alternative would, that the Wilmington Street Extension alternative would not lower the existing or future level of service. And importantly, NCDOT agrees that this alternative could function, and they support it. The third point is that developers and owners that would be directly impacted by the extension are supportive of it, and they are willing to contribute both in the form of right-of-way dedication and eventual construction when the time comes. And the last point is that this alternative is supported by the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and Southern Gateway Corridor Study. So there's, there's prior work that has been completed that kind of shows some reasons, highlights some reasons behind why the Wilmington Street Extension would be beneficial. So before we wrap up, I just wanted to cover the near-term schedule for the Wake BRT Southern Corridor project. So last month, City of Raleigh and Garner staff met to go over high-level design concepts, some of which you saw in the development slides which I presented, which show what the, what the potential cross-sections and the design for the BRT route could look like. And this month, the Wilmington Extension and Tryon Road TIA will be finalized. In April, it's the next major touch point with the public. So there's going to be a Wake BRT Program Virtual Open House. And then the target for the LPA adoption is in late spring and summer of 2021. And so with that, we would be able to enter into project development. And before I move on to the next slide, I just wanted to give Het a chance to, I don't know if you want to add anything with respect to the virtual open house, Het?
Yeah, I can just add real quick that, you know, with, given the pandemic environment, the last planned virtual open house is in November. And what we've been doing with public engagement currently in trying to get project updates to the general region is creating short videos of each project and the current project activities, highlighting decisions that have either been made recently or upcoming decisions, and then providing a timeframe for moving forward on that project, what to anticipate within the next, you know, six months to a year as design advances. And so that's sort of what you would be expecting. We'd be presenting on the Southern Corridor, as well as some of the other corridors that are currently in design.
Thanks, Het. Okay, and with that, we want to open it up to discussion and questions with Town Council. And I just wanted to reiterate again that, you know, it's staff's intent to be able to work through any questions or concerns that Town Council might have with the goal of reaching a consensus this evening. And then with Town Council's agreement, to place this on the consent agenda for April 5. And at that time, we would, Town Council would vote on the formal endorsement of the locally preferred alternative, which staff is recommending, which is the Wilmington Street Extension. So at this point, I just wanted to thank you all for being here and for listening. And we can go into any, any questions or concerns that Town Council might have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lohler. And Het, it's good to see you again, sir. You're looking well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your good presentation. So I will go to council, a lot of information shared there. And this moves us along a route, no pun intended, that I think we've been working on for some time now. So council, what thoughts do you have to weigh in on this? I'll start with Mr. Vance.
Yes, this is a general question. What type access will, access control will be on this facility is proposed? Total control, partial control, or no control?
So I think there will be some level of access that will be provided to cross the Wilmington Street Extension. We just need to work through, as we enter zero to 30% design, to identify where those, you know, potential signalized local crossings could happen along the Wilmington Street Extension, because you'd be crossing BRT lanes. And you wouldn't want that to happen, you know, so often that it impacts the level of service for the BRT, but you do want to provide cross-access on either side of the Wilmington Street Extension.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay, thanks, sir. I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
Yes, thank you, Gabby and Het, for your information. A question on the timeline, if we move forward with this, says that the 30, zero to 30% design will start sometime this spring, and it'll end approximately 18 months later, 18 months later in the fall. And at that point, everyone will, I'm assuming all the parties will get together and review the information. And this question that was just raised by Elmo would probably be addressed by that time. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And we would actually have other touchpoints before we get to fall of 2022 with 30% design. What we've been doing in the past is, when we get to about 10% design and get ready to submit the corridor into the FTA's ratings submittal, we would present the design at that point to the partner jurisdictions, the impacted jurisdictions, and City of Raleigh, just so everyone's aware of the 10% design and the estimates that are going into the FTA ratings application process.
Okay, all right. So as the process is going through for 18 months, there'll be updates. Everyone will know kind of where we're thinking about going, correct?
That is correct. And we would probably also do that as we have, you know, those planned virtual open house, public engagement events. We'd like to come to the town before those, just so, you know, you were able to see that information before it becomes public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Gallinger.
You have a question. And you said that the traffic impact analysis was being done and should be done this month. Is it done?
Yeah, it's pretty much done. We were waiting on any last-minute comments to incorporate. Basically, the last meeting we had was to review the findings and results. And there was, you know, a few comments that the consultant team was going to address, but in the conclusion, identifying that feasible alternative that we can pull into the zero to 30% design work, so that that will be tied into it. But we are wrapping that up this month.
I mean, it'd be beneficial for, I think, us to see what that is before we vote on it as far as the route. It just, my concerns are sort of the same they were earlier around the traffic and impacts on westbound Tryon traffic and traffic coming up 401 and turning left on the Tryon, and what kind of disruption that potentially is going to cause for anyone in Garner trying to go west. You know, if you're on the north side and over there, it's not going to matter. But, and now that they're saying the no grade separation for that intersection, I'm curious, that sounds like signalization, as Mr. Vance pointed to. So the question is, what is going to be the impact of that signalization on those traffic flows? So, I mean, and also, you know, I think having the public input would be helpful. I mean, we haven't had public input, this is a work session, so we don't have the opportunity to get public input on what's being presented tonight before we're being asked to vote on it on a consent agenda, which I, I don't, you know, doesn't give the public much of an opportunity to have input on the process. The other question is, what is the proposed route for the BRT south of Tryon Road? How does that align with the property line that's there? When I look on the GIS, I've known not to trust GIS. But what is the route of that road relative to that property, that east property line of this 10601 Tryon? Does it perfect, go down perfectly down the property line? Or is it further to the left, the west, or the east? Because what I'm seeing on the GIS is that it actually goes over most of the other property lines that that piece of property is not touching. So do you have any clarity on the route of that?
I, Mr.? I can, I can offer that. City of Raleigh planning is requiring the development to the west to dedicate half of the right-of-way on their side, because that is, the eastern line is our jurisdiction line. And we are requiring half on our side. So as much as it can be, it will split the, split that property line down the middle. There will need to be some adjustments to the north and to the south. But we're working with those folks to make those determinations as the development comes in. But we're working with those folks to make those determinations as the development comes in. And they can do the engineering work to actually see where exactly it does need to go.
So which property owners have, have sort of pledged to dedicate right of way so that we don't have to pay for it?
Right. So the 601 property will have to do their half as part of the development in our jurisdiction. Raleigh will be, it'll be up to them to get, to get the other half as those properties develop. Either that or they'll have to put up the money for their portion of the BRT route along that proper, along that section. And then, as Gabby noted, the redevelopment of North-South Station, they would do the dedicating because they would have to at least build what would be the equivalent of a two lane facility because it's on our transportation plan. So that's why we say with the BRT chipping in for the bus lanes, the developers are at least responsible for two lanes. And so that kind of makes up the difference.
So the eastern side, that's Raleigh's responsibility, the eastern part of that right of way?
Okay.
That makes me feel a little bit better. And I guess again, my question, is there any more clarity on the, the crossing there since there's not going to be any type of grade separation?
Head, is that something that we could go ahead and forward to ask members who'd like to look at it?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And I'll just add, you know, again, I didn't go into the details on the TIA, but there were five design alternatives that were looked at with varying levels of access at the intersection of Tryon with Wilmington Street Extension. The one that most people felt most comfortable with was keeping some of the existing movements for general purpose traffic, eastbound and westbound crossings that are currently there at that intersection, and then only introducing the through movements for bus rapid transit. So it is a very limited phase signal at that point where it's only being triggered, you know, a couple, you know, 10, so every 10 minutes when a BRT bus is coming there or through pedestrian activity, if that is considered as part of design when we look at it. But basically, it, in the TIA, it shows that it won't significantly impact the level of service of the other intersections because it's not being called as often. And it's only being there to serve the through movement of BRT. And there are various ways through design as we move forward in 30% design that we can make sure that those changes don't negatively impact the level of service for any of those intersections.
So that the route that's going to go up, this extension is going to be predominantly BRT and really sort of secondary vehicular traffic. It's not meant to be a vehicular thoroughfare to downtown Raleigh. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. It would just be general local access to those properties to either to the north or the south, and it would be right in, right out for the most part.
Okay, that, that's, that's a great alternative. Yeah. Okay, so that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer, give you a turn.
Yes, I, again, thanks to Gabby and Head for the presentations. It's always clear and easy to comprehend. So appreciate it. Good to see you again, Head. Question, when will this route be completed? I mean, like, the bus be able to ride on it every day?
So our current goal and assumption is that once we have the 30% design project started, fall 2020 to complete 30% design work, another year after that to get to 100% design. And this is where I kind of have to caveat that once we get closer to that point, we have to wait on the federal process to play out to see when the project gets federal allocations. But our current goal is to have the corridor in service by 2027 with potentially, again, if all the funding pieces play out, construction could potentially start in late 2025 timeframe.
So best case scenario, about six years, if everything falls into place correctly. Okay. I like, I like the idea. I like the way the alignment is and bringing the BRT line into that area. I have some real reservations about the cooperation with the owners of North and South Station. We've gone through, well, two or three owners in the time that I've been on the council. And we have tried to, we reached out to them and tried to work with them about increasing their traffic there, just some, some general maintenance issues and not had much success. I know, I believe it was sometime, not last year, but maybe a year and a half ago, there were some of the buildings over there in South Station were leaking from the roof and getting very little attention. The parking lot in South Station is a disaster and it will not survive six years. I am concerned, nothing that we can do about that, but just for us to be aware, because I'm very much concerned that the owners are looking at this project as their lifeline and not, not meeting their own responsibility here. I've heard from, from tenants there, the people that rent spaces and they don't, they don't get much cooperation or much buy-in into what needs to be done. They say that, what you're telling us, they say that they really need to revitalize that and redevelop and so forth and so on. And they do. My question is, or thing I think we need to be mindful of is, are we going to see anything different after they get from us what they can get? So just put that on the back burner somewhere. I'm not, I'm just not confident in them. But I like the project.
Okay, yes. All right, Mr. Matthews, I don't believe I've recognized you yet, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The timeline was the question I had, and Ms. Behringer, she already asked that, and great presentation. And, you know, we work hard as we can to get, get it done as quick as we can. And so just push forward, all we can do. And as soon as we get this thing going, I think it's going to be the better for everybody. One quick question. As it goes through, it comes out by that Walmart Supercenter. Just from my understanding, this, it going to continue out to 401 and go north back into Raleigh? Is that the game plan?
The current assumption is that it would turn around at that, at Purser Drive in some manner. And that's something that we would, you know, look at more closely in 30% design and then come back on Garner Station Boulevard, back onto the Wilmington Street Extension. So it would not come out to 401.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe each council member's had an opportunity to comment, let's just follow up. Anything else? Mr. Trezenberg, I see you there. You were there to answer questions, I guess. Do you have anything else?
I have one quick, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
A question for Mr. Trezenberg, and you can be vague if you want to be. What kind of density are we looking at, at that Tryon area? What, what sort of visions, what kind of proposals or notions are you hearing from interested folk?
Sure. You know, I think at this point, without the BRT there yet, I think folks are, they're definitely looking at apartments, but probably not anything, you know, super mixed use or super high. But this is one of the areas where, once we get Garner forward version of the UDO in place, we would want to be strongly looking at the Activity Center Zone Designation for this area. So we continue to, we've continued to push that with folks, to strongly consider going up. Sometimes we get a better reception than others. Some of the, some of the agents, I would say, that are working with folks tend to be very just focused in on what they know they can do now. Which is unfortunate in some respects, but I get it.
Thank you.
Mr. Dallinger, I would add that Jeff was speaking about the, the Tryon Road parcel. We do believe from our discussions, though, with the owners of the shopping center, that they are looking much denser and much higher for redevelopment opportunities. So it was a very positive conversation with them about how high is too high.
Right.
Understood.
So we hopefully have had good discussion on that particular topic unless there's further questions or comments. I believe, so the, the next step is to ask if this be placed on the consent agenda for our April 5 meeting, at which time a record of a formal endorsement on the town's locally preferred alternative will be, will be established, I guess. Is that right, Ms. Lawler?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. And I was going to add that we can include the, the TIA in the packet as well for Town Council to be able to review as they make that, that formal endorsement.
Okay. So, Council, I don't know that we need to take a formal vote. If you can just indicate, either with a, I guess, a thumbs up if you approve the recommended action, then we will put it on the April 5. Okay, thank you all. There's a consensus here. So again, thank you. Very good presentation. Head, it's always nice to see you, sir. The best to you. And Gabby, we haven't seen you in a while, I don't believe, so it's good to see you as well.
Yeah, good presentation.
Thank you. Good seeing everyone as well.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you both.
All right. I guess we can excuse you unless you want to just hang around and observe, but we'll see you the next time, okay? All right. Okay, I'm going to go to the next item before we take a recess. I believe that we are a little less than two hours into our meeting. So the next item is UDO 2101, and Mr. Reginald Bowie is, is here to present this item as it relates to telecommunications facility in the Lake Benson Conservatory Overlay District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I want to introduce that 2101 telecommunication facilities in the Lake Benson Conservation Overlay District. This text amendment was introduced by American Towers LLC by Thomas H. Johnson, Jr. And the location is Lake Benson Conservation Overlay District. The reasons for the reason cell tower at 828 Thompson
Mr., let me interrupt if I could. I, I don't know if other councilor experienced the same thing, but your voice is really cutting in and out. If there's anything you can do on your end there, Mr. Bowie, to correct that?
Okay. Am I coming in fine now?
We hear some static and cutting out on your end. Go ahead and talk to us some more. Let me see if you got it cleared up.
Okay, how about now?
It's good right now.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll continue. And please stop if it happens again. The reason for the the cell 828 Thompson Road is being discontinued due of a lease agreement. The removal of this tower later this year would create a gap in the service coverage for this area of Garner. Many properties in the area of Garner, south of Timber Drive, along Thompson Road are within the Lake Benson Overlay. Restrictions
Mr. Bowie, I'm going to ask if, I don't know if any of our tech people can sort of diagnose this problem and help with, it's a little disconcerting to me at least that we, we just, we're not hearing you clearly on a steady basis. Your voice is cutting in and out. I don't, I don't know if that problem can be resolved by just going maybe to the next item. Anybody have a suggestion, John, or?
It sounds like you've got the input problem. You want to Mayor, would you like to go ahead and take a break now and see if we can work that out? It may take a little longer.
Okay, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
See if we can get that problem. Something else.
All right, all right. I have about 7:50, so let's take a 10 minute break and come back at about 8 o'clock. And in the meantime, I'll confer with Mr. Bowie or Mr., or the town manager to see if we've got the problem resolved. Okay, so I'll declare we're in recess, a 10 minute recess starting now. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your patience. We're back now from our recess. Trying to resolve some issues, technical problems, I would call them. And so do I understand, I believe, Mr. Trezenberg, that at this point, you're going to pick up on this topic and and lead us through this discussion, sir?
I can do that, yes, sir. And Reggie, if, I know you can probably hear us, if you'll just leave the presentation open on your computer, I think I've got the ability to advance the slide. So again, just to quickly, quickly recap, this text amendment is coming from American Tower. As you heard from the last time we came to you with a telecommunications tower amendment, the cell tower at 828 Thompson Road, the lease is not being renewed by the landowner. And so that tower is having to come down later this year, which will create a pretty significant gap for cell service in the area south of Timber Drive, roughly between, I would say, Vandora Springs and Highway 50. So some of you may live in that area. And the, the tower company is looking, has been looking for other suitable sites. We believe we had worked through them to find one, but then came in, found that it's in the Lake Benson Overlay District. The site that they have, have that does fall within that boundary. The Lake Benson Conservation District, of course, was set up for environmental reasons. As, as Reggie noted here on the slide, that its purpose is to protect the lake from non-point pollution sources. Staff was surprised to find that telecommunications towers were in the prohibited list of uses. They do have a very limited impervious footprint, far less than many of the other permitted uses that are allowed in the Conservation District. We highlighted multifamily, churches, public parks, community centers. All of those are going to have not just major impervious facilities, but parking areas that come with them. Additionally, we also would note that municipal owned utilities like water towers, which is very similar, are also allowed. So there doesn't really seem to have been much correlation that we could determine as to why telecommunications towers were, were kind of singled out in this particular district. We also did contact, just as a side note, we did contact City of Raleigh and Wake County Planning to see if they had similar restrictions in their jurisdictions around either Falls Lake or Lake Benson or Lake Wheeler. They do not. When we asked them if they would object to us making this change in their UDO, they said that they had no objections at all. So currently, we would need to change two different locations in the ordinance. One is Article 4.9D, where telecommunications facilities are specifically listed or not listed as a permissible use. And then also Article 5.3, there's another reference where it says that towers shall not be allowed in that particular overlay. So we would need to amend the ordinance in two places. Again, you see those more in detail here under the current text. And so we just added those for reference. The applicant has specifically suggested putting in this final sentence in Article 5, that towers shall not be allowed in Lake Benson Conservation Overlay, except upon approval of the Town Council. I think, you know, we as staff may come back to you with a recommendation just to make that even a little more, more simpler. If that's okay, we'll give you a couple of options to consider how you would like to go forward if you'd like to entertain this amendment at the
Jeff, excuse me for interrupting. Is that textual information supposed to be on our screen at this time? I'm not seeing it.
It's not there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Sorry. And so here is our recommendation that Yep. Yep.
But it is in our agenda. If you do fault, agendas on that.
Catch.
Yep. Um, and so if the council is interested in moving this forward from this work session, then we would go ahead and recommend that you have, uh, schedule a public hearing for April 20th to get public input. Uh, again, this follows the track of public hearing first, then referral to Planning Commission, and then back to town council for a final decision. Um, again, we don't have any objections, uh, to this going forward. Uh, we checked with those around us. They're fine as well. Uh, so if you have any questions, we'll be glad to take them now. But otherwise, uh, again, we'd like to set the public hearing for April 20.
Okay, council. Um, yeah, we'll certainly have some time to discuss it further then. But, uh, any questions, uh, for now, council? Uh, Mr. Shingler, I'll start with you.
No, sir. I, I knew that, uh, I know that another property owner here who was dealt with the cell tower when this was put in many years ago, and she's just been waiting for this lease to expire because of issues she has had with the cell tower company currently.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Uh, always just a couple. Um, so with regards to, um, UDO rewrite that's currently underway, um, I looked at the section that's drafted that was dated February 11th, 2021. It came before council. So this particular section is currently under, under review and will be coming to council in relatively short order. And I guess my question is, is it, or is your recommendation, and what is the compelling, uh, rationale for pulling this out of, out of cycle? And is this something that, you know, we, we should consider, um, with text amendments that come in with sections of the UDO we're already working on?
Right. So this is one that, um, you know, we, we made them aware of that particular timeline. Uh, they went ahead and decided that they wanted to pay the fee to, to move it forward more quickly. Uh, so they did that. Uh, I think the real issue is that the tower is scheduled to come down later this summer. And so they need to get working on a solution more quickly than what the UDO timeline would allow for. Um, so as not to hopefully have gaps in service for folks, cause my understanding is, is that at least three or four, if not all four of the major carriers are currently located on this pole.
And they otherwise would be grandfathered in, right? If they were to maintain the lease or extend it, they'd be grandfathered in? Is that the case?
Um, well, they, they currently, I mean, the site that they have now is com- is in compliance. It's just that the landowner's not choosing to renew the lease.
Okay. Okay. Um, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. And my concern is, you know, as far as emergencies or 911 and quite a few of us live in this particular area, plus the fire department and EMS. So, uh, and which is not brought, this is not brought up, but communications is all, since all on that same tower, uh, I understand a sense of urgency on this thing just from the, uh, uh, emergency operations.
Okay. Um, Mr. Benz?
No questions.
Okay. So Jeff, am I understanding that, uh, you're sharing this as information and the recommendation is that, uh, we bring this back, uh, for a public hearing on, uh, on our April 20th meeting?
Yes, sir. Our first order of business is always to bring this to you first at a work session, uh, to find out if you're supportive before we actually move it forward.
Okay. Council, um, satisfied with, uh, with that course of action? We'll bring it back for a public hearing on the, uh, 20th of April.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, Jeff, anything else? I think that's okay. Thank, thank you, sir, for stepping in. And, uh, we apologize to Reggie. I'm not sure what the problem was, but, uh, anyway, uh, that'll probably get fixed and, uh, no problem. So thank you. You're welcome. All right. Um, so we now move to item four on our agenda, and I see Mr. Jones is already here. I believe he's presenting on this, and, uh, he's gonna be talking to us about a topic that has received considerable, uh, discussion, uh, both by council and some of our citizens. Um, so, uh, we're anxious to, uh, to hear. I believe you were part of a committee that was put together, talked some with the town manager and others. So, Mr. Jones, I recognize you at this point.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are here. I have with me this evening, Katie Lockhart, who will be joining us. And then Chief Benz will also be available for some, um, discussion as well. Just, uh, kinda what we'll do this evening is we will, um, get going here with our presentation. Katie's gonna kinda lead us off and talk about, um, current program initiatives going on with volunteer commu- with volunteer-based groups, uh, other community efforts they're doing, some of the departmental things they are doing. Uh, then I'll step in and talk about some things we're doing from a public works perspective that are more staff-led and generated. So let's see here if we can get our screen to share this evening. And let's see if this works. Whoops. And we will start our slideshow from the beginning. Can you see that this evening?
I, I can, yeah. Current program perspect- perspective is a-
Yes, current program perspective, litter sweep should be the thing you're seeing now. So, um, with that, I'll ask Katie to, uh, begin the discussion, and then we'll, once we wrap up through what we're currently doing, we will, uh, lead into some future ideas we could do moving forward.
Can you, can you blow your slideshow up to full extent by hitting the little screen symbol down there at the bottom right?
Rodney, I think I have that.
Next to the 76%, that little symbol.
Hold on just a second, Rodney. Let me go back to that. Let's-
We'll hit the, from beginning. If, if not, that's fine. Just go back to slide one if you can't get it.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, I'm working off a tablet here this evening, so.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, that's fine.
I can ask Matt to chime in and share this if you'd like. That'd be more helpful.
As long as everybody can see it, that's fine. Let's, let's go ahead.
All right. Katie?
Yeah, Forrest, will you back up one slide to that first one?
That's, that is the first slide. Get, uh, Katie?
Oh, I see. I'm seeing the second one.
Yeah.
Um.
Let's try this again here.
Yeah, I can, I can do it if that'd be helpful.
That may be helpful, Matt. If you don't mind, Matt, I'd appreciate that. I guess we did need our insurance after all.
All right. Um, so good evening, everybody. Um, I'm gonna take us through what we typically offer out at White Deer Park with respect to litter cleanup, and then talk a little bit about what we have planned for this year, uh, in response to the increase in litter. Um, so we offer two primary events. This is something that Jacqueline Standard and I, uh, work on together. Uh, one of them is Litter Sweep, and that's an initiative of the Department of Transportation. Um, as you would probably expect, it focuses on roadways. Uh, they set aside two weeks in April and another two in September or October or, um, across the two months together. Uh, and so they really try to encourage people to get out on those, those major roadways, including adopt-a-highway segments. Uh, Big Sweep is a program offered by Wake Soil and Water Conservation District. This one is also offered in spring and fall, although it's not specific dates. We get to choose our own for this one. Um, and its focus is less on roadways and more on waterways, uh, protecting drinking water and ultimately keeping trash, uh, from reaching the ocean. So typically, we have grouped these and called them Big Sweep Litter Sweep. Uh, and we try to attach them to another observance for increased visibility and buy-in. So in April, we usually go with Earth Day or Earth Week. Uh, in a pinch, we can do Earth Month, cause the whole of April is Earth Month. Uh, and in September, we try to align with National Public Lands Day. Um, and typically what we'll do is set up at the Holly Shelter at White Deer Park, um, and have a sign-in onsite where people can come and, uh, get supplies, like the, uh, litter grabbers vests, gloves, bags, that kind of thing. Um, we've had varying degrees of participation in those events. Uh, the spring is always busier. We sometimes can see triple digits, uh, participation for those. Uh, but usually we see between 30 and 50 participants, uh, at each of those events. Uh, and I listed a couple of other initiatives on here. The International Coastal Cleanup, which is actually the umbrella that, uh, Big Sweep falls under. Again, ultimately trying to keep trash out of our oceans. Um, and then Raleigh Regional Creek Week, which is a, a local, uh, initiative. Um, and that one is less about trash cleanup and more about general education. And so with those kinds of events, this is an opportunity where we can educate, but also get people engaged and out, uh, hopefully picking up trash. Um, so that's what we've been doing. Um, Forrest, if you wanna, or Matt, go to the next slide. Uh, just like the rest of you, we at the park have noticed an increase in trash and tried to figure out how we can be part of the solution with that. Um, so in response, we're doing a, um, a community-wide cleanup. We're borrowing those two weeks from the 2021 Litter Sweep, which is April the 10th through the 24th. Uh, and what we've done is set up an online registration that went live on Friday, and groups can sign up for a particular segment of road. There's a mix of adopt-a-highway segments as well as those that have not been adopted. And Jacqueline keeps a list of kind of, uh, frequent offenders for roadways that get the worst in terms of, um, stormwater. Uh, I'm gonna be working with group leaders as they sign up for those segments to provide supplies, either in a pickup or a drop-off in some way. Um, we just got in a whole bunch of new safety vests and, uh, and bags, and we have gloves for those folks as well. Uh, they're encouraged to clean up anytime during that timeframe. It's up to that group. Uh, we just are trying to get it between April 10th and 24th. Um, we are encouraging participation on social media as well. Uh, we've got these, the prop here, these little swag bags. Um, so there's Garner branded tote bags, and anybody who uploads their photo during their cleaning, um, and tags White Deer Park in that on Facebook, uh, has the opportunity to get one of those bags. Um, ultimately, we're hoping to have this be not just an enhancement for this year's event, but something we can do long-term for the spring and for the fall. Um, I think having a two-week window, uh, is gonna be, gonna attract more people than just having an hour and a half on a Saturday morning, uh, in April or in September. And then the last thing I wanna mention is that the town is now a sponsor of an adopt-a-highway segment. We have, uh, Garner Road in between Jones Sausage Road and, uh, Auburn Church Road. So that's a two-mile stretch that we will have our name on, um, and will be responsible for quarterly cleanups out there. So we're trying to, trying to encourage the public, uh, to get out there and do the change, but trying to lead by example. I'm happy to answer any questions, or I could pass it back over to Forrest.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for Katie?
I'm sorry. The mayor was trying to get in, but I wasn't unmuted. Uh, I do have a question, uh, that I think I know the answer to, but is it true that, uh, during 2020, and I guess due to the COVID, uh, problem, that the, these, these programs really weren't activated or, or, uh, we didn't, we didn't have anybody involved with those during the past year? Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we looked at doing maybe a drive-through, um, supply pickup, but because we were in shelter-in-place orders, it felt like a little bit of a conflict of interest to tell people, stay home, but, you know, come out and get some trash cleanup supplies. Uh, and then Big Sweep was canceled altogether. It was, it was not encouraged. It was not covered, uh, under their umbrella. Um, and so between those two, uh, those two things going on, we just didn't have any of these events last year.
Okay. And one follow-up question. Um, do we, uh, do we know which of our roadways, uh, have, um, persons or groups that have signed up for adopt-a-highway? Do we get that information from NC DOT, or do we, do we keep that in a, in a file somewhere?
Uh, we have kind of a roundabout way. We're not able to get that information directly from DOT because of privacy, which, which is understandable. Uh, but they do have a very handy map that, that John found for us a couple of weeks ago that has those segments identified. Um, so I use that information to create a master list and try to get as many of those contacts and their contact information, um, so that moving forward, we can get them engaged during these timeframes as well.
And so, um, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but do, do you know, essentially, uh, you know, do, do we have several of our roads, uh, that, that are in the adopt-a-highway program? Or you say, or do you know?
Yeah, there, there are quite a few. Just in the 30, I think we originally identified 33 different segments to put up for signup. And, um, I know at least, at least half of those were already adopted by groups.
Okay.
I hesitate to give a better number than that.
Um, council, any questions for Katie? I'll just see if anybody has some rather than call the role necessary.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Hi, this, um, I had a suggestion, a request from a citizen, um, yesterday after having parti- he participated in some of the cleanup that occurred this past Saturday. I think that was citizen organized, but he wondered if it was possible that the town could make or create, uh, trash bags that have Keep Garner Beautiful written on them, uh, that citizens could pick, use, pick up those trash bags and then use them to clean up with, leaving them along the roadside, and then suggested that when All-Star comes by to pick up trash on a regular basis, when they see those bags, they would pick them up and toss them into their, into their regular pickup. So is that something that, uh, we could move forward with? Or was it, would it take more discussion? Or what, what could we do with that?
Ms. Behringer, I think, uh, and, and Mr. Jones can tell me if I'm correct. I, I believe, uh, as this moves forward, there's gonna be some addressing of those kinds of, uh, pickups. Am I right, Forrest? Or?
That, that's certainly something we could consider. I think, um, I don't know at this point in time, I would make it part of, um, our contract with, um, All-Star Waste. Uh, I think that would get, um, you know, it, depending on where they went, where they were putting the bags out, oftentimes these bags are, excuse me, in front of undeveloped areas, um, which might not be real conducive. I think that may be something we could work out if people are cleaning up a certain area and wanted to reach out to us at Public Works and let us know. Uh, perhaps that may be something we could look at, um, then going out and getting so those bags aren't sitting there, similar to what we do with the, uh, volunteer-based programs that Katie, uh, has mentioned already. That's kinda what they do. They go out and clean them up, let us know, hey, we cleaned up this weekend, or whatever that time is. And then we're out there pretty well early that next week getting those items up. So they're not sitting on the roadway for a long time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. For the council members, questions here as we move through this? Okay, so, um, next-
Yep. Um, I can thank you. So Matt, if you'll advance us forward. So, um, a couple of things I wanna talk about here are from current program perspective. We'll, uh, lean into a little bit of the DOT and what they do. Um, I know many of you are familiar with their, they have re- recently restarted, um, their litter programs, I think this past February. So, um, just talk about what does that mean for Garner, you know? Uh, so I've talked with, uh, someone, uh, Corey Sutter from there, our local office here in Division 5, and said, you know, where, where are you picking up at in Garner? Because many areas they pick up are, um, where they mow. And as you know, a lot of the DOT right-ofways throughout town, such as Highway 70, uh, Timber Drive, Avasper Road, Vandora Springs Road, a number of other streets that are main thoroughfares for DOT, we mow those right-ofways. So we are, already are routinely collecting the litter from those. So really for us, the places we would see DOT working in our area in and around Garner would be places like Highway 401. We do very little mowing out there, so they would be policing most all of that. They would also be working along I-40 where they're. For us, most noticeably would be some of our ramps, our large interchange ramps, um, there at I-40. However, we, we mow some of those ramps as well. In conjunction, we've kinda got a line. We meet on those. So there would be some places they would be working. Um, then I have worked with, uh, Corey there in the, in the local office to add Creech Road, basically from Garner Road back into Raleigh to his list, as well as Old Stage Road from, um, 1010 back to 401. back to 401. So those are some areas in which DOT would be sending their contractors. Creech Road and Old Stage would be much more through probably an on-call type-based contractors. They have some routine standing contracts, and then they have some folks that kind of come work problem areas, hotspots for them, and that's kind of how we'd be treating Creech Road and Old Stage. Matt, if you want to move us forward?
Forrest, if I could, before we move forward a little bit, if I could say, I think there was a citizen-organized cleanup this past Saturday, and they did a fantastic job of cleaning up Creech Road. So, and DOT goes out there this week and looks at it, they're going to want to know why you sent them there.
Well, thank you. And we, in our discussions with Mr. Sutter, I think though, recognizing Creech Road and Old Stage would not be places he would be going weekly by any stretch, it would probably be places he would be going on a periodic basis, in addition to, in addition to where they mow.
Well, the citizens did an outstanding job. It was a nightmare before they did that. Just, it looked like a dump, but they did an outstanding job of cleaning it up, so we'll give them some recognition.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, and thank those citizens for helping us out there. So as we move into where, where did our crews currently work and kind of what are some cycles we're following? So before I get too far in this, I just want to create a definition that typically when we're talking about picking up Garner collection areas as well as DOT, we are working in the right-ofway. You know, right-ofway, what is that word for many people? I think those of us that are in and around it all the time were very familiar. But that is basically the, along the, along the highways. And as a general rule, it kind of takes you to about the back edge of the ditch or the tree line, if you will, if you're thinking about undeveloped areas. So some places we, we work routinely, or we kind of cover Timber Drive on a biweekly cycle, we, that also aligns with our mowing cycle. So we're out there in the mowing season from about this time of the year. I think we just mowed Timber Drive for the first time this year, this past week, so we've had some crews out working. So we would service that road biweekly in mowing season, and that would expire sometime around November. We also work Highway 70 through our contract with Bland Landscaping on a biweekly basis. Again, it's following a mowing cycle, and then in the non-growing season, they're probably coming at least on a three-to-four week cycle, collecting trash out there as well. We police areas like Garner Road, we police that area weekly, as well as some of our Main Street corridor and our gateway signs, we're working those areas weekly as well. Old Stage Road is something we have been working on for a little while now, in conjunction with the county. Wade County does very little litter pickup, but they often do a lot of collection as you're heading to their, leading into their convenience center station. So their trash site they have out on Old Stage Road, they have a contractor that kind of goes out there maybe twice a year, collecting trash along that route. I'd worked with the folks over there with Wade County and asked them if they could kind of extend that back up toward Van Doren Springs Road. They have graciously done that. And then we have done it on a semi-annual basis here with our own staff. And then when you align with what DOT mows and does on probably a three to four times a year, Old Stage Road's getting collected about six times a year. Again, we also provide litter collection throughout town, both on DOT roads as well as town streets on the frontage of undeveloped property. Again, that is happening on a routine basis in our mowing season, and that cycle's following about every three to four weeks during that mowing season. And then in the off-season, in those more winter months, you know, November through March, say, it's happening possibly every four to six weeks. I will take this opportunity to recognize, while I'm not blaming this on COVID by any stretch of the imagination, but modifications we've made with staff over the past year and just most recently as well, some of the town was in a shutdown timeframe, these cycles would have been impacted in that regards. Early last year, our summer would have probably looked pretty good and true, but then when we kind of came back in after the New Year this year, that four to six week probably was not realistically happening as we were modifying some of our staff. So that's kind of our program, what we've been collecting. Matt, if you want to advance the slide, and I may take an opportunity here just to ask council, if they had any questions about areas we were collecting, somewhere you thought we were doing that we were not, before I move on to future ideas.
I have one comment. Kathy mentioned the group, the citizen-led group that met this past weekend. I joined that group. That was organized by Sean Corrigan, who's, he's been in Garner for like two months now. And he decided, I want to do something about litter. And so he put something out there, and a bunch of folks got together. Tim, with Tim Holt was out there. So we, and we did, Rebecca and I did part of Garner Road, kind of in front of the Jürgen property, down to right by the cement factory, and came up and did both sides, and we got two bags of stuff. Did, the real issue with it was, we, that land that is owned, that's across from the townhomes, I think the developer bought it some time ago.
Yeah.
Well, there's a significant amount of trash that's outside of the right-ofway and on private property. And so we're not, we are not going to go onto private property to clean up what's becoming this accumulating small trash dump. I'm sure the people who live in the townhomes don't like it when they drive, and I'm sure real estate agents that are trying to sell those townhomes don't like to look in the woods and see tires and fast food and all this other stuff. And so I guess my question is, what can we do to reach out to specific private property, particularly corporate private property owners, to either allow volunteers to come on and get trash, or for them to pick it up themselves? I mean, we want to be respectful of private property rights. And also, it's at one of those gateways into the town that we want to make look nice, so we might want to look at certain places where that kind of happens, where we're outside of the right-ofway, but it's still a mess, so we can engage folks and find a way to help them clean up what, you know, they're not, they probably don't live there, they're not, they don't drive by every week or every month. So maybe that's part of some programs, to do some sort of outreach to, I mean, I know there are volunteers that are willing to go back in there and get it, but we don't want to trespass in order to do it. Also, I want to like thank the town for, it appears they supplied the litter grabbers and the vests for that group that went out there, so that was really great, and really appreciative of that. There was also, after it was done, on social media, it was posted that it was done, and some owner of a Bullseye Waste or something said that he, let him know when you're dropping bags, and he'll come and pick them up. So there's a lot of interest out there for folks who, they want to help. So it's all about just finding the right way. The other thing, I'm glad you mentioned like Old Stage and Creech Road. I don't know any right off the top of my head. I think Buffalo might be an example, but there are certain roads out there that people might want to do but are very dangerous, just because there is no sidewalk and it's very narrow, and we don't have to decide tonight, but there might be some way to coordinate where there's some extra protections if people want to go out on some of those more difficult roads that DOT doesn't do. And maybe the town does them themselves because they are so dangerous, but just things like that. I know people want to get out, but they also recognize that it, traffic's really close to the roads sometimes, so.
Yeah.
On the edge of the road. But, but thank you. I want to thank everybody's interest in what they're doing, and Kathy's just pushing, 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 and stuff's starting to happen, so that's good.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
So moving forward, you know, we've, we've been giving some thought and had some conversations with DOT about, you know, what can we do? So we found a few things about working with them and just asking them to include some of our problem areas in town that we have on some of their on-call lists to try to increase frequencies. We have thought, we've come up with several ideas here ourselves. Katie's already got one going this, hopefully this month with an increased volunteer, I would say this month in April, increasing our volunteer-based programs. We talk about increased enforcement. I think when you, when you ask specifically, what can we do about private property, we have some things probably in our ordinance that talk about illegal dumping, but I don't know that there's anything that talks about undeveloped land, which is oftentimes where these challenges are. And so I would, I would, I can talk to my friends in code enforcement, but I know in the past when we've done this, it's, you know, when you're thinking about mowing and things of that nature, if it's undeveloped, we have really little need in our enforcement ability on that. So I wouldn't elaborate too much on that, other than that might get outside of my lane. You know, obviously, so what can we do? So one of the things we could talk about is, you know, hiring additional town staff to focus on litter. I'd like to say, you know, we could hire a couple, two, three people, and really, you know, just eradicate our litter problem, but I'm afraid that's not very practical and something we can do and promise you that that will be the outcome. So I think, you know, when we talk about things, we, you heard me refer tonight a lot about cycles. You know, we pick up things on a certain cycle. I think we've obviously got areas, we've unfortunately go pick up litter today, and you come back two or three days later, and you really can't tell we've been there. So we've talked about, you know, do we hire additional staff and just have them focus on this litter and increase our frequencies? Is that something we want to do? One of the things that's not on this slide that we've, as we've been giving us a fair amount of thought here in recent weeks, is how could we, because that's a very permanent decision with adding staff. The second piece is, how might we be able to partner with someone like DOT and take advantage of some of their contract offerings they have? Could we supplement with them and ask them to increase some frequencies in areas in town that they're currently not working, where we would maybe offset some of the cost of that for increased service levels through funding and funding their call volumes? We did look at, you know, do we, could we hire contractors internally to do this? I can tell you, I really have no experience with hiring contractors to come in and pick up litter. The closest thing I could relate it to, that we had spent a fair amount of time researching several years ago, was our street sweeping. And this, I think, is our, where our hesitation was at to say, let's just go hire a contractor like the DOT does. When we looked at doing some contracting out for our street sweeping program, what we found was, due to our size and nature of our town, that most contractors wanted to come in and work, and they would work and be in town for three or four days, and they would kind of make a, a one sweep of your area, and then they're gone. You know, so we're coming in for that one every two months. So then I think that still leaves us back where we are now, back at that place. We go clean up these areas today, and then they immediately look bad, you know, by the weekend, and then we're looking at that and still dealing with the concerned citizens, and we still have our litter throughout town. You know, so that if we choose, if we choose to look at a contracting option, whether that's DOT or our own contract, I would say we've not been able to fully flesh that out. I think the staff, if we were to look at that, to give you an idea, we've run some rough cost on what it would take to hire some additional staff. This is looking at probably two, a crew of two to three, a truck to, to deal with this and be able to go out and pick up some bags. Right now, you know, we, when we're picking up trash, we're just putting in the back of the roll out of the truck and then taking it to a dumpster. But I think if we were going to actively engage and put a focus on litter, where we're going out and collecting bags that other people are filling, we might, we'd want to invest in a very small trash truck. You may have seen it if you've been to any special events, they've got trucks that kind of sit on F-250 or 2500, three-quarter, or one-ton trucks. They can move around, they have some packers, you may have seen them in special events, so that's what we would look at. But that comes in at a cost tag around about $250,000 of a first-year cost. So we can address some of these needs, but it's really just wanting to start the conversation with you guys. Do we look at the staffing? Do we try to flesh out some of these other ideas with contracts, with DOT or our own contracts, recognizing that's, I don't have a good gauge as I stand here before you tonight as to exactly what that looks like nor what kind of cost it would be. So kind of open up and hear from you guys a little bit there.
Or is Joe or somebody going to go through the last bullet? I mean, I'm a little interested in what we can do in that arena, but that, that's a tough one, I'm pretty sure. But maybe before we, was somebody going to cover that? We could stop.
So, one of the things I would say there is, and Joe, you certainly chime in, where we have been working a lot with PD is, and we have illegal dumping. You know, we have someone that's using this not just as a place to throw trash out from the window, whether it's my McDonald's bag, but someone who has moved out of their home, and they, you know, went and dumped a bunch of old furniture on the spot. Another good example where we worked with PD here, probably in recent months, was we had, we had someone that was taking trash and probably leaving about 10 to 15 bags at a particular intersection in town about every three days. We'd go and remove them, and literally two or three days later, bagged trash was back at this spot. PD kind of worked with us, sat up on that and found the person doing it. And then we were able to have a conversation, said, hey, tell us a little bit more about why you're doing this. And we're able to have a conversation, and we were able to eliminate that issue. And then I know, you know, it's kind of like, one of the things I've talked with Joe as well, typically, people typically don't speed when they know a law enforcement officer's sitting there or routinely sits there. They're not typically throwing out the trash with the cops behind them. And so for PD, it's a very hard piece to, they have to see it in order to really do some, some true enforcement. But Joe, I'll let you pick up on anything I may have left out.
Now, I was just going to say that if you're not aware, the Senate Bill 155 and House Bill 100 actually increased the fines, they were filed in February this year for the North Carolina Legislature about increasing the fines, almost doubling or tripling the fines from 250 to about $500, or from 1,000 to 2,000, or 500 to 2,000. So it significantly increases the fines for, for littering under general statute, it's So obviously, you know, enforcement is certainly a tricky issue, like Forrest alluded to. It's, I was going to say, in 28 years, as I'm driving around in my police car, I don't think I've ever seen somebody litter before. You don't always look at, but certainly draws my attention. I've seen it plenty of times when I'm in a personal car, I'll see somebody throw a bag out the window, or a drink can, or cigarette butts, those kinds of things. But in my police car, I don't think I've ever seen that. So it's very difficult to, to sit up on an area to figure that out. And I think some of the issues don't just come from individuals, but maybe from trash trucks that have, that are going, or you got these big dump trucks moving back and forth, debris back and forth from work sites, and those kinds of things. So whenever we see those types of things and stuff coming off of dump trucks, we do deal with those quite a bit, more so than, than just the individual littering. I know that our department is also involved in the litter sweep program. We do Van Doren Springs Road and have done that for probably 15 to 20 years at least, as far as that goes. Their Van Doren Springs all the way down to Buffalo. So enforcement's certainly an option, it's just a very difficult option to, to, and resources-wise, to enforce that way. But, but the legislature is looking at that, is providing some, some monetary, you know, fines, higher fines for that kind of activity. And if you notice, I think it was on the news not too long ago, WRL had the story, DOT has that new app out where people can send in information if they see somebody littering. So it's certainly a more of a public push to get rid of the littering issue, and certainly a big issue. Maybe something like that as well we can work through, and I don't know if we have the resources necessarily to send letters to anybody we see throwing stuff out, but certainly something like that might work here as well.
Okay, thank you, Joe, and also Forrest. I'll let council members go ahead and have their inquiries or comments at this point in time. I'll come back to Forrest with one other thing later on, but anything from Mr. Singleton?
Let Ms. Behringer go first. This is her, this is her baby.
This is my baby. Well, my first inclination is to say to focus on volunteer-based programs because that increases community pride. And back to that suggestion the gentleman sent me by email about trash bags that say, I believe says, Keep Garner Beautiful. That's a visual, that's a visual, and that's, that speaks to people who see it, that both people who care and people who don't care, that there is community pride here, and maybe we'll think twice about throwing this out, or maybe the folks that are mindful of what it looks like and sees those bags will want to get more involved. So anytime you've got a personal investment in it, you're more likely to follow through and see it get done. I know that oftentimes folks look to the government to take care of everything, and we just can't do that. We've got to find a way where the citizens feel like they are invested in it, willing to be invested in it, and put energy into it as well. So I'd be all for volunteer-based programs, at least to start out with. Maybe we might have to add some new staff later on, but to begin with, let's get our folks who live here involved and show the pride they have in our town.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
I'm enjoying Gray's cat there.
This is the, this is the 14 blush year old, the queen. She's mainly an outdoor cat, but, but she has to have a special diet now. She should, while the other three that we saved, rescue cats over the last couple of years, the queen comes in because the rescue cats are too young, especially one of them likes to jump on her, and you don't put up with any junk. I mean, I assure you.
We've got two cats here. This has nothing to do with the litter, but.
All right, let's get on with this guy.
We love our cats, anyway. But yeah, you're talking about Old Stage Road, man, I drive in every Sunday going to our church, and it is unbelievable. But yeah, you're talking about old stage road, man, I, I drive in every Sunday going to our church and it is unbelievable. What's, there's more paper than there is grass out there. And, and I, it's frustrating to everybody and I know, but Chief said you have all the laws you want, but unless you can catch them, you know, it is what it is, but you know, the volunteer groups, you know, and I asked somebody, I said, you know, you see these signs, you know, of different groups or organizations picking up litter. I was not sure how long, is it a quarterly thing, a monthly thing? Or have some of them got out of it altogether, has it all been updated? So I don't know what the answer is, but I think getting the community involved as much as we can and really promoting it is about as good as we can do right now. It's, it's, it's frustrating and I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just glad we're talking about it and doing all we can. So that's my two cents worth, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Vance, anything?
Well, everything to say, but a good job for all who've been out there. And I'm in line with the volunteer effort as well and possibly with some structure later on with the cleanup piece. And I really liked what Councilwoman Behringer said about the pride piece. I think that's a good, a good way to go with the volunteer effort. It's quite evident, it's quite evident it worked well this past weekend. And I would like to, I would like to see that and honestly, personally, that, that momentum continue in that direction with the, with, with the community involvement. And, and, and that's all I got to say about that, really good job.
Thank you. Ms. Challenger, anything you would add?
Yeah, disagree, I think the, the volunteer angle is the strongest way to go. I think, you know, the town having a limited role in terms of supplying some like safety gear and coordinated pickup, so it's not just somebody goes out and they leave bags on the side of the road and nobody knows they're there, but finding sort of a, a way to notify or find some way to get the pickup done. Because I know the guy who organized it this weekend, he rented his own U-Haul to haul this stuff away, which is great. But, you know, we don't want every, you'd have to do that every weekend. And I think that the other piece around, you know, finding a way to work with some of these, particularly the corporate property owners, they're a little easier maybe to get a hold of, private property individuals is a whole other, other thing. But to, you know, get that access to some of these properties cooperatively, not in an antagonistic, you know, way, so that they'll allow people to come on there and, and do get just litter would be really helpful. But yeah, the pride piece, you know, out there on the road and, you know, there were some bicyclists, a group of cyclists who came by and they all said, thank you, right? And there were some people that honked, I like to pretend they were honking thank you too, I think they were. But it's that visualization, I think the bag idea is really great. People start to see those bags. The town's role is again, sort of safety, get the message out through social media and help find ways where people connect if they want to get involved. I think that, that's kind of the role the town can play at this point.
Just a couple of comments, I'd like to get with perhaps Mr. Mercer and Adam Carroll to see if we might can do some public spots as mayor or some of you as council members may want to do, do some, have a little photo shoot where we're encouraging people to, to look out for these things and to be proactive and, and so forth. I think that wouldn't hurt and maybe would help some.
With those trash bags that say, keep Garner beautiful.
Well, let me, let me jump in here. I'm not gonna sit here and vote to buy trash bags we take into the dump, that's the dumbest thing I ever heard of. Let's get shirts made where we have the Garner a great place to be, keep Garner a great place to be. And then on the back you can put, keep Garner clean, pick up litter. Those are used over and over and over. Put a bag on the side of the road as we go to the dump, that's crazy. Let people, give people shirts for the pride. I came back home tonight off MLK at Garner Road and as I approached the greenway there, y'all are familiar with, I saw this huge mound of light trash. I don't know if, if it was the City of Raleigh or volunteers, but I'm assuming they cleaned up that greenway. It was, it must have been 20, 30 bags, there was a chair, like a recliner, landscape timbers. And I'm assuming Raleigh's one, or someone's gonna pick it up. But you can't see, unless you've placed the bags just right, get shirts and let people wear the shirts. That's the pride that people can use over and over again. I don't care about stamping stuff on a bag that has got to be turned right for somebody to see it. I appreciate the thought, but let's get some behind the mayor there, keep Garner a great place to be and some, some litter sweep cleanup shirts. And when we have these things to the town and Katie works with them, give people have plenty of shirts. Give shirts away, different colors and let people wear their shirts around town. That's a good, thank you, Callie, I appreciate you walking right in front of me there while I'm talking. Anyway, that's why she's the queen. Anyway, that, that's go with the shirts instead of bags. That's just, they can be used over and over again.
I'll just say, you gotta buy the bags anyway. And the way social media works these days, what happens is you get pictures of people taking pictures of the bags that are a particular color that represent the litter pickup. And so then they see it on social media and then they don't have to read it on the side of the bag. They'll see it on the side of the road and say, hey, that's one of those keep Garner beautiful bags.
Also see it on your shirt, we're in the grocery store and the drugstore and the hardware store and this and the other.
We can do both, we gotta buy the bags anyway.
Yeah, I'm confident we can work out something on that. But speaking of bags, and I've spoken to Mr. Jones about this before, I know there are, I know of at least one, maybe two people that, and every little effort helps by the way. So people who go for a walk on a regular basis, daily basis. And these folks will take a bag with them, perhaps from their house, and pick up trash as they go. And the question has come about, well, you know, once I've filled up this bag, what can I do with it? And I don't want to put Forrest on the spot too much, but I know he's been, I believe amenable to the idea if, you know, if, if, if either they will call his department or, or in some way let him know where they've left the bag, then, then he can find them. And a concern with the person who's picked it up is like, you know, if it's, if it's not picked up fairly soon, obviously either wild animals or something sometimes come along and they'll just scatter the trash that has been picked up. So Forrest, can you, can you comment on that? Is it, is it reasonable for, for us or me to say to a citizen, if there's a number they can call, if they picked up a bag or two and, and let your department know where, where the bags are?
Yes, that, that is a very fair thing we can do and I think it's a way we can be involved without having to increase our resources to do that. And I'm, I'm not trying to get in y'all's dispute about bags or no bags. So, but one, one good thing about a bag could be in that environment, so if we had some folks, because you're right, I know we've got some folks that walk from down Buffalo Road, for example, or Buffalo and Amesburgh to the park routinely, and they'll pick up trash. So I think this would be some of those good places for someone like that or someone who's, you know, maybe walks through a trail on a greenway or wherever it is that they're wanting to help pick up litter. If we did have those kind of bags to distribute out to some of those routine people, those would be very easy and convenient bags for us to then see, oh, that's one of our bags, we could pick it up and they could also call us, you know, if they're, if they're kind of going and they've seen an area, I think like the, the place where the gentleman was on the series the other day, it's a cut through. He see, noticed a lot of litter on his normal walk, so he piled those bags up out near the, the road for us and we got them up. So it would kind of help us, but yeah, I think that's certainly something to do. And what I would say is you had to talk to people, I would call our office, we can go out and get that up. And typically that's something we can handle within a day or so, or a day, most of the time that day.
Okay, okay, and Katie?
Get back, get back to the bags, you know, we ain't gonna paint, stamping a dang on bags, that's the dumbest thing I ever heard. The ones that the litter sweep are orange, they ain't got litter sweep on there, do they? No, we can get some yellow ones. The ones that's blue and gold, get some yellow ones, then we know they're ours. They're not orange, get yellow bags, you know, that's it, you can promote that in your thing, just get a certain color bag. And I just picked up yellow because it was different than orange, but anyway, they know the color, but blue's hard to tell. But I mean, yellow would stand out, hey, these are town of Garner bags, we hand them out, fill them up, we'll pick them up. Or somebody will pick them up, we'll see Ms. Behringer around.
Well, let me tell you something, every time we go for buying, getting t-shirts and wearing them, no matter what brand it is, no matter who orders it, mine never fit because you just can't get, every company makes them fit differently, you got a whole bunch of garb, you got a whole bunch of garbage to deal with there. Print the bags and let us do it, come on Gray, give me a.
I think the compromise is the, the colored bags of a very bright color. And that's a very distinctive thing for Garner, that's probably the compromise. I'll buy, I'll buy the first round. I'm on the record, I'll buy the first round.
I can go for the colored bags for sure, but no t-shirts.
Okay, well, well, yeah, I think we've probably exhausted that pretty well. As long as there are bags out there, then we know what they're used for and so the person's picking them up on what they are. I, I was just gonna deviate just very quickly, this is maybe a little pet peeve of mine, I was gonna steer it towards Katie, but maybe that's not fair. Over in Lake Benson Park in particular, and I'm wondering when they do the, I don't know if it's called the clean sweep or they're supposedly working on waterways and stuff. I know there are a couple of those, I call them the, the little inner ponds off of Lake Benson that, you know, go right by the trail. There, there's at least two of those, I believe, that, you know, they just got a lot of plastic bottles and stuff. I don't know why somebody would throw something in there. But yeah, I guess you'd have to have some kind of a little, a little boat or, or, you know, a long thing to, to grapple those things out of there. But I was just wondering if, if when we have this other program, if, if, if a couple of those water areas could be cleaned up as well.
Yeah, you can definitely add those to the list. That's the kind of thing that isn't really on the radar, so the more of these kinds of ideas that you all share, the better off we are.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, one last question I have for Forrest, is it a reference to those dangerous railways we have with some steep curves and speeding vehicles? I'm assuming there's a, there is a method of providing protection for individuals who are out there picking up trash, flashers or something of that nature?
So we don't, we do not have any protective equipment that we put out to folks. And I think there's where you can, we can, and this has kind of been the conversation of the past. Oftentimes we do not find volunteer groups who are willing to work those high traffic, more dangerous sections right away. Those are where staff will, will typically handle those and work those. And we do go out with the necessary trucks and equipment, you know, truck with lights on, safety vests and everything else. So that's, that's been the challenge with the volunteer bases, you know, where am I comfortable coming out to work and picking up that trash?
Gotcha, good, thank you, thank you Forrest, appreciate that.
You know, Mr. Manager, I was gonna ask you if, you know, we can take this conversation from this evening and maybe let that, I don't know if I should say simmer a little bit, but good ideas and maybe circle back to council in, in a little while to see if we've been able to go ahead and flesh out some of these ideas. I know there's some volunteers out there helping and that's commendable. I don't know how long that will continue unless there's a little more organization, but perhaps it will. And we'll do everything we can to encourage that. But maybe we can circle back in a month or two to see what efforts have been made and whether or not we need to try to be more specific in some of these things. But maybe some of it's sort of a trial and error type thing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take all the ideas we've heard and flesh them out and see which ones we can get done in the short term and then look at some long-term solutions also. And Rick Mercer, the communications manager, wanted me to mention that we have already started blasting out the April events on all our social media. And like Katie mentioned, we do have the signup portal active and so we'll continue to advertise that. The other thing I just want to remind council of and the public is we do have an app. So if you need to report something, garbage, trash, excessive trash on private property, you can use our app to report that, it, use the camera, it'll geocode the location. You know, you get called, Public Works to pick up a bag, I'm sure they wouldn't mind if you use the app also. So we have various ways that things can be reported, I just want to let you know that.
Okay, and I want to take just a moment to thank Forrest and Chief Benz. You know, they run departments that are plenty busy and I know there's a lot going on. So thank you for taking your time to, to, to be a part of this discussion. And also Katie represents Parks and Rec, so thank you all.
And I forgot that, we are also reaching out to civic groups to help out with the April effort.
Okay.
One last thing, Mr. Mayor, if you need help on the water, I think Rebecca called last week to do pickup on Lake Benson in a boat. If you give her a boat, in one of these lakes, she'll get on that boat and she'll go pick up some trash just to get out on that water in a boat.
Well, of course, the lake I'm talking about is, is the little, the little side ponds that are.
Yeah, I know the one, I know the one you're talking about too. So if there's one way to get access to it, she can get a boat out there legally, somebody allow her to get out there, she'll get out there.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else have any other comment? Forrest, Zach pretty well covered your presentation, you and Joe and Katie?
It did, I think we have, we have the direction we need on how to, how to move forward and certainly hope to circle back with you maybe sometime early summer and be able to share some successes we found and had.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, you can go to Garner Info and go to public nuisance and go down here, trash, solid waste nuisance. So there is a place on here that is another, you know, it's also on here, talks about solid waste and sanitation. That's more about your, your, your own garbage, but it is under public nuisance on Garner Info. If you need to use, sorry, audio, audio location for that.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton, for pointing that out. I was generally aware of Garner Info, but I sometimes don't look behind that to see something specific, so that's very helpful, sir. Okay, anything else? If not, I'm gonna move us to the next item through our agenda and let some of these other folks go home or, well, I guess maybe you're already home, but you may be able to sign off, I'm not sure. But thank, thanks, it, it's obviously a concern to, to a number of people in our community and rightfully so. And as had been pointed out, it really is a, is a problem across the state. And that's not excusing the fact that we, we shouldn't do what we can to, to do our part. And I'm convinced that that's gonna happen, but hopefully, hopefully we'll see some evidence of, of this and it's gonna be an ongoing process, it's gonna require a lot of effort, so thank you. Okay, Mr. Roy Lance, you've been very patient there, sir. I believe we are to your item here, an update on the Public Works Space Needs Study, sir.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. We are gonna transition topics now and I want to give you an update on the space needs study. The, the last time you heard from us was in October, so, you know, about five months ago. We had done the first two phases of what's ultimately a five-phase project. And you all gave us some good feedback on that. We talked a little bit about some of the pros and cons of working with our existing site and thinking about expanding versus buying a new site that would maybe give us the potential to grow for the longer term. And, you know, there would be more investment, but that, that might be a longer term option. And that dovetailed really well with the next phase of the work that the, that our consultant, IBI Group, has been helping us with, which was the, what they call the parametric design analysis, and they're gonna talk more about that tonight. But the, basically using GIS modeling to help us identify some sites that might be suitable. And so I'd like, Mark Humany with IBI Group was, was with us last time and he's with us again tonight and I'm gonna turn the presentation over to him. We are not, we're not at a point where we're, we're finished with anything, but we have made another step forward in the, in the work of this project and thought it would be a good time to give you all an update. And so just a procedural note for you all and the benefit of anybody watching, Mark is gonna walk through a portion of the presentation that discover, that discusses the process in general and, and the work that we've done. When we do get to the part where we would be discussing specific properties that theoretically maybe we would end up pursuing and wanting to buy, we're gonna have that conversation in closed session just so that it would, you know, protect our ability to, to bargain or negotiate for those properties if, if that was the direction that council ended up going at some point in the future. So this is, unlike most items, we'll, we'll start an open session and go into a closed session for a, a portion of that item. So with that, and I, I should, like I said, Mark is here and of course Forrest Jones is still with us. So we, you know, there are staff available to, to ask questions of, but at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Humany with IBI Group.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tell me, Matt, before I start, am I to turn on my video camera and am I to share my screen to operate the presentation? Or will you be doing that for me?
Yes, to both, I'm happy to, to be the fallback plan on the, on the screen, but if you can do that directly, that'd probably be easier.
All right, let's, I'll make that work. Okay, I'll, I'll ask everyone to tell me when they can actually see the presentation on the screen.
Yes, I can see it now.
Excellent, okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Good evening. I'm Mark Humany with IBI Group. Um, we are an international design technology company based in Raleigh. And I'm also speaking on behalf of our site design partner, Withers Ravnell, based in Raleigh, um, sorry, based in Cary. And Jason Bertencino is also logged into the session, just in case, uh, he can assist on any, um, land-type questions. But I'll be giving the presentation tonight. Okay. So as, um, as Matt introduced, we had a five-task work plan. We had come to you back in October, having gone through just the first two tasks. We've now completed the first four tasks. That is essentially the heavy lifting. Really, the only remaining task left is the, the final wrap-up report and the final presentation. But we are looking at the space needs analysis of the Public Works campus off of Ran Mill Road. These two images here represent that campus. In addition, we've been looking at the police department's needs for large evidence storage. They currently are making use of a, a small outbuilding behind Town Hall and, as well as a vehicle impound lot back at the Public Works campus. And we've also analyzed the town clerk's records that they're currently using, that Pearl Street Storage Building. So all three of those, um, program elements are part of this study. When we last presented in October, we had already concluded the 20-year a- assessment of needs. Um, at that time, and I'm gonna focus you on the year 2040, this is a little bit of chart up here in the upper right-hand corner that identifies, um, the department and what it currently has in the year 2020, um, and what we had projected for the year 2040. You can see the substantial growth from 33,000 square feet now to approximately 185,000 20 years out, just for Public Works. Uh, they're currently sitting on about a 13-acre site. We've projected 20 acres minimum, depending on how efficient the site is. So, again, I'm not gonna read through every single one of these, but there's substantial growth. And we would look at this 20-year plan as a basis for a land purchase and for master planning. Uh, having said that, it's very common to look a little bit more near-term for what would we actually budget for and what might actually be constructed. So we did a in-depth analysis with staff, going back through the interviews and the site tours, um, focusing on efficiencies, on shared spaces, separating needs from wants. Uh, and we identified a year 2030 needs assessment of just under 170,000 square feet, about a 16 acres minimum, um, and, and so on and so forth for town records, police buildings. Down at the bottom is a summary sheet of actually a fairly lengthy spreadsheet that has all the data in it. But these are the summaries. So again, 2030, we think, is the long range. Uh, let's look for property, let's plan for that, but let's actually budget and bill for, um, for 2030 needs. Uh, Matt introduced the topic of the parametric modeling and that's a sort of proprietary process that we use that essentially is leveraging computer power, uh, using algorithms where we define rules and criteria that ultimately crunch a whole lot of data, um, and spit out key metrics for, you know, here's the, the top five or the top 10 or the top 15 best solutions. And then we kind of go from there. So we apply this parametric modeling to the Wake County GIS database, specifically for Garner's, um, ETJ. And we set up various rules such as, uh, you know, let's not have the facility within a school zone. Um, we, we develop criteria such as how well would this property, uh, meet up with the existing neighborhood? Let's not look at sites that have a high percentage of flood zones. Uh, I'm not gonna go through all of this, but again, we created these algorithms to study the GIS database. It, it crunched every parcel available in the ETJ, uh, based on this weighted criteria. And also, uh, weighted criteria is essentially studies physical characteristics of the property. We also looked at operational costs, because wherever you are in the ETJ, you have to operate from and service the entire, um, community in the service area with labor costs and fuel costs. And so there was both an operational score and a criteria score. We evaluated that. Ultimately, um, we brought the, the top 30 sites, potential sites, back to town staff. We talked a lot with town planning staff. We got, gained a lot of insight and local knowledge as to which parcels might already be under consideration for development and therefore off the table. Um, any other sort of local knowledge was applied and, um, ultimately even have to, having done all that, we looked at the top seven properties and, uh, or assemblages of properties and just looked at sort of the good old-fashioned way of, um, studying the property a little bit higher level, uh, in more detail, um, not necessarily just through a parametric model. So that was the, uh, the process that we went through. Um, the, uh, the weighted criteria, again, there was some filtering criteria that said, let's not look at anything that's a parkland, let's not look at any property that's a roadway, let's not look at any parcels whose land value are, are too high or building values too high, um, or, um, so those who are filtering criteria, that was either a yes or no, it either fit the criteria or it didn't. Weighted criteria was a lot of other physical characteristics that had a, an assigned weight to it. Um, zoning, of course, was one of those criteria. This type of facility is ideally suited for I-2 heavy industrial, um, or service business. Each of those allow for this type of government facility with outdoor storage, uh, as a special use permit. We also gave a little bit of credit to perhaps an I-1 light industrial or an O-N-I with the idea that if we did happen to find something that, uh, was zoned, that we might pursue a, um, a rezoning. Um, it, it was just given a certain weight. We, we actually looked at all parcels regardless of their zoning, we just weighted them differently. Anyway, that was the process. Um, without any questions about the process we used? After that, uh, Matt, this is where we had discussed that we would go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I think you were on mute a moment ago, if you were trying to jump in.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, exactly. Anna, excuse me for that. Uh, yeah, I was just gonna ask if council has any, uh, process questions at this point before we move into closed session. Anybody, council?
One, one question in reference to, um, uh, we're looking at building for the 2030 needs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a recommendation. It's, again, this is based on, uh, what we most often see. Certainly you could build for 2040 needs, it all depends on budgeting and financing.
Okay. Alright, that's, that was my only question.
Okay, anybody else on council?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, and, you know, and I agree with what Elmo was saying there. Let's really look at outside the box here. And with the growth we've got coming into Garner, both, both commercially as well as residential, uh, and we also know that, uh, land is getting scarcer in Wake County. So when we make these decisions, I think we really need to think more into the future, make sure we're gonna get us a, an area big enough to, to do what we need to do. And with the equipment and the buildings, it's gonna take care of our long-term needs, not have to come back 10 years and say, man, we, we let this one get by us, you know, it's not big enough to, to serve what we need to do. And, uh, so, uh, growth is, is coming and we've had this discussion many times. And, uh, so whatever we decide to do here, uh, one more sentence, let's just do it right the first time. And, uh, that we gotta come back and say, I wish we'd have done this or done that. So I just encourage all of us to, to think along those lines. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Let's go into closed sessions and hear some specifics and then we'll see. That's, we're, we're getting way ahead of ourselves here. Let's listen to some specifics that they are gonna present to us and then we can talk.
Okay.
I think some of that may already be addressed.
Yeah, I'm sure that's true. But, uh, if there were any other process questions, uh, we would deal with those. But, uh, okay, hearing none, um, let's see, is the, uh, Mr. Roy Lance, is the site, uh, that I'm looking at here in my agenda, the, uh, uh, the, uh, the citing that we are going to use as far as you know?
Um, yeah, I believe so. It'd be the, the real estate citation, yes.
Okay. Alright, council, uh, if you're ready, uh, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session and I'm gonna give you the site, as I understand it, NC General Statute 143.318.11A5. Uh, and this has to do with discussion of real estate and real estate acquisition.
Some moved.
Okay.
Some moved.
Yep.
Seconded.
Moved and properly seconded, uh, okay, no further discussion. Uh, Ms. Ashley, could you call the roll on this, uh, um, vote?
Mayor Proton Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved and so ordered. Um, council, give me just a moment or two for us to transition to, uh, closed session and we will begin. Okay, uh, the council has been in closed session as noted previously and, uh, I discussed a couple of items. I'm going to ask our town attorney, if she will, to, uh, just give a brief summation, uh, report from our closed session.
Yes, um, council in closed session received several reports regarding, uh, potential real estate acquisitions, uh, and gave direction to the manager on how to proceed with those. Uh, because it would frustrate the purpose of that direction, uh, that information will remain confidential at this time and part of the closed minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones. So, um, council, I know it's been a long night and, uh, we've covered a lot of stuff, but we have just a couple of other things to do and I think we can cover those fairly quickly. So, um, I'm going to recognize the town manager for manager reports. Mr. Dickerson, are you available?
Finding my place here. Um, so just real quick, uh, we're still in the middle of the spring yard waste and large trash pickup. Um, that is, I believe, running on schedule, um, for the first time in a few years. Uh, we're running pretty close, maybe a day or so out here and there. Um, I was gonna talk to you about election, I will save that for another day, um, just to give you an update on, um, what me and some of the Wake County managers have been talking about on the election schedule for November.
Mr. Manager, actually, could you give a little bit of insight on that? Cause I've heard some things circulating through the county about number of municipalities not wanting to do it and do it and the cost. So I've had some interest in, in what the status is at, right now on, on the other municipality for involvement.
So with the legislation that any, uh, local government with districts move their election, probably possibly out to September 2022, uh, because of the census data being late. Yeah, there, it was six months, but it, it may go out even further. So, um, several of us have been talking about, um, advocating to keep our election on November 2021, like it normally would be. And, um, and so the rest of us are agreeable to that. Some were flexible either way, but we have sent a letter to our delegation saying we prefer to just keep it November. And, um, I think the push now really is not to move anybody who, who doesn't have district, but we just wanted to make sure. The question with that is, when we do early voting, uh, we divide the cost among all of us. And, um, so Raleigh and Cary typically, um, have early voting, they're early voting longer than anybody and plus they may have runoffs. So with the new law of last, um, last election, all the early, early voting sites in the county had to be open the same days and the same time. So we were having to do 17 days, cause that's what Raleigh and Cary required or desired, whichever way you wanna put it. So with them out of the picture, we've been talking about, well, we can do less early voting days. And so in the past, Garner has done as little as two and probably as much as five, um, with the turnout we get. Um, however, um, Apex is talking about possibly doing eight days. Um, and we may get that down to, um, I think, six, six or seven days, depending on how you start on the weekend. But anyway, so that cost has to be divided amongst the rest of us and most of the other municipalities, um, especially your smaller ones like Wendell-Zeppelin, could not foot the cost on that. Um, it was just too much compared to their, what a penny on a tax rate was. The other thing is some, um, towns don't wanna do early voting at all, regardless. So right now, that leaves us and, um, Apex. Marshville may jump back in, but I'm not quite sure. So that, right now, is putting our cost right in the, um, $70,000, $75,000 range. We were already paying about, I think, $65,000 under the other scenario when we had to go to 17 days, uh, probably in Cary Inn. So it's not an extreme amount above what we were paying before. And, um, and in the past, anytime we tried not to do early voting, that didn't go over well with the community. So, so we're trying to get the days down to a reasonable amount of time to get the cost down. And so I'm working with some of the other town managers. And, um, the more people that get in, the better it spreads the cost. It's not even spread, but it does help lower our costs.
Cause I have heard of Apex. Sorry, Phil, go ahead.
How many, you, you mentioned Apex, how many other towns are, look like they're gonna be on board with us?
Just us and Apex right now.
Wow.
Others have.
And I had heard that Apex was trying to do 10 days, just so they could cover two weekends, two full weekends, was their sort of objective.
I think they were gonna go back and look at, um, starting on a Saturday and then going back around a, um, whole week and maybe possibly get it down to like eight days or so. So.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, if we're gonna do it, you, you gotta get a couple of Saturdays in there and, and I don't think we did Sundays, but into the whole next week. But yeah, you, you would need to do that, that would be, uh, I mean, you gotta make it so people can have access. Uh, I, you know, if it's, if it's eight days, it's eight days. I mean, that'll be a Friday, a Saturday, skip Sunday and the next six days.
Well, I think we, we typically will do Sunday except for the Sunday before the general election. We have done.
Alright, that's fine, whatever. Saturday through Saturday.
Okay, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Manager, you will keep us apprised of any further updates and, uh, new information you receive on that, right?
Correct. And, um, John was gonna give an update on the Jones sausage parking issue with the trucks.
Yes.
And, um, so if you wanna do that. And then we also have the pending agenda items in here. And I just want, I needed to tell you that, um, the DFI report will get moved to April the 5th. Um, no, no, I'm sorry, uh, May, May, um, the first meeting in May, um, just cause we didn't, we're not able to get, um, some of the information from the consultant.
My, it's alright.
Do you still wanna?
Okay. Okay, John?
So, um, several things that we've been working on already, we've updated you by email on, but just to reiterate those, we did install bollards in the extra asphalt that was in the taper on the southern end of the property. There was some complaints by one of the residents who lives the, one of the first properties beyond Amazon there about trucks parking there. We did find that a truck has backed their way into there at least one time. So we have more bollards coming next week to try to fill in the gaps even tighter. We also have signage coming next week that DOT approved that we will install on Jones sausage that says no trucks over, uh, 7,000 pounds, whatever the, the rules are. Uh, no trucks over 7,000 pounds empty weight with arrows going to Calabar Street. Um, so Calabar Street already has some no parking signs on it, uh, but we're gonna see if we might could add some at the dead end of Calabar. It's a little tricky because Calabar is not technically a state road or a DOT, I mean, a DOT road or a town road. Um, and then Mr. Singleton, um, had a suggestion that, that we appreciate getting, uh, for some signage going into on Hay River Street. Um, I was not aware of the fact that the town did adopt the ordinance back in, um, the 80s that specifically named some streets going through Greenbrier to prohibit through trucks, um, from using the cut-through between 401 and 70. So he brought that to our attention last week, which I appreciate. Um, and, uh, Ms. Jones did find the ordinance and so she believes that we could amend that to include Hay River Street. And so if council is okay with that, we'll bring you back an, an ordinance amendment. And we will also add Purvis Street in downtown to it, just because we had a different issue we've been dealing with, um, with trucks damaging some power lines, um, going to residents' homes. And so we were trying to figure out the best way to handle that. So we now with this ordinance amendment, we'll be able to, to wrap all those together. I cannot. I cannot promise that they're going to be foolproof because some of those drivers may or may not pay attention to some of these signs at 2 o'clock in the morning. Um, but it would give us more ability to be able to, to give citations for anyone who is, is breaking the ordinance. So um, we are moving forward those steps. And if we'll bring that ordinance back to you at a future meeting if you are agreeable to that.
Thumbs up on that, council? Yeah.
I'll send, I'll text all y'all one of the pictures of one of the signs in Greenbrier. There's one off Jessup off 70, off uh, Winter Locken, and also on Pine Winds. Uh, that was about, I'll, I'll send you all this, what the signs look like.
Mr. Hodgson, you, you mentioned including Purvis Street. Would it also make sense to include Montague with the new entrance off of 70 or not?
I, I think, I, I, I don't know whether or not it would be necessary to do that because the street is improved and wider and there's no overhead power anymore. So it might be nice to include it, but I think there may be times that we need to, to allow trucks to get through there if there's a detour or somewhat. Um, there's just not a reason for them to be on Purvis Street.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, John, for your work on that. That's been a work in progress for some time. And uh, hopefully these will resolve some of the issues that really concern the uh, neighborhood out there. Um, Mr. Manager, you already spoken to pending agenda items. Is that right or?
Yeah, I did. I, I did want to add one more comment to the election um, discussion just so there's no misunderstanding. The 75,000 that I mentioned was just for early voting. There was another charge for the general election. So I just, I want to make sure y'all understand that. And that's more like 90 to 100. So I just want to make sure.
But that, that's budgeted, correct, Rodney?
Correct. It's, it's, it is budgeted. They're both budgeted at some level, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, sir. Um, all right. I believe we are down to council reports. And uh, I probably don't have to encourage council to be somewhat concise and brief, but uh, we will, uh, we will move to those at this point in time. And I will start uh, with uh, Mr. Singleton.
Well, in honor of Ms. Behringer, who's complained about shirt sizes tonight and the length of the meeting, I'm finished. Thank you.
All right. And with that being said, Mr. Singleton, I will now recognize Ms. Behringer.
Okay, just one thing. Um, on Garner Road, let's see. In front of Garner Rec Park. In front of Garner Rec Park, uh, several months ago, the sidewalks were redone. I think uh, some kind of lines were taken care of. Anyway, new sidewalks were put in. The ditch in front of that um, that small area is extremely deep. And uh, there was orange fabric fence up there for a very long time. We noticed earlier, uh, maybe last weekend, maybe Saturday, fabric fence is gone. I understood from Mr. Johnson that DOT had agreed to do something about the depth of that ditch, but nothing has been done. And if some, i- it's just ripe for somebody falling into it and getting hurt. It's probably four feet deep.
So Ms. Behringer, that is a change order with Moffett Pipe for the Ra, the New Rand Road Project. Council approved a change order. Once we were able to get, Mr. Johnson was able to get DOT to agree to the way we were going to handle the drainage, which was a change from the original plan. So that is a change order that has been approved. It's just that Moffett has not moved back across to that side of the road to do work, but we'll figure out why the fencing was removed and get some safety fencing put back in place.
That's a little, it's just a little scary to see that big, that long stretch there where it's so deep.
Yes, and I'm not sure why that was removed.
Yeah, okay. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Vance, report.
Uh, yes, just one thing in reference to the Amazon trucks uh, parked in various locations. Have you been in contact with Amazon in reference to that, that issue?
Yes, sir. We're in constant contact with them. And every picture that you send me from um, Ms. Dunn gets forwarded on to them. And they send their patrol out to go and um, take care of it. Um, they've, they've done what they think they can do, which I didn't mention earlier, which was adding um, the, the electronic fencing to the app that the drivers use. Um, and so at this point, we've just got drivers that are, that are not following the rules. And, and Amazon, we believe, is, is um, doing what they can. I, I probably emailed the, the site manager there no less than three times a week, nearly every week, to get his help with a, a random truck or a parking situation.
Good. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Well, in respect to those who need to get to bed early, I have nothing else I need to add tonight.
Thank goodness.
Mr. Dillinger, you're on the spot.
Uh, you put all the pressure on me.
Yes.
Um, just a quick report. I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting there. You're slowing me down. See what you did? You interrupted me and slowed me down. I was on a roll. Um, just a quick report from the UDS Steering Committee where the tree preservation uh, petition went. And there was a lot of really good discussion. Um, Jeff did a really good presentation to sort of put better context what a lot of the numbers and percentages mean with regards to what other municipalities are doing. Um, some of those numbers are net and some of them are gross. There's, but there's a, to shorten it, there's a lot of good conversation about the approach we want to take towards canopy preservation, but that includes replantings. And so I think there's going to be a lot of good come from that. Um, it did what it did. Right, people are talking about it. Developers are talking about it. Quality versus quantity and all these things. So um, it was a good, good meeting. I think good stuff will come from that. Um, I've had a couple of people turn my ear on the dog park in Lake Benson. Um, some complaining about the mulch and how dusty it is and it chokes the dogs and, and it gets muddy when it rains. And um, and in the water situation where the dogs get water. I don't have a dog right now, so I don't use the park. Um, but there's concerns about how wet it gets. Um, I can follow up separately from that. Um, a bunch of art projects, I'll save that for next meeting that we're doing with downtown Garner. Um, also with that, um, at some point, I'd like to know if we could do some sort of structural review or in assessment on the cannery building. Um, just to see if there are any outs, super outstanding structural issues if it were to be repurposed at some person, some point in the future. Um, there are some ideas of maybe doing something with it, but we also would want to have some sort of preliminary um, structural review before we get too far down that rabbit hole. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. I believe I've covered all the council members. Uh, the mayor has just.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask just a quick question from uh, John. Okay. Uh, there was a truck cab parked down in Hunter's Mark overnight last, a couple of days ago. If we put signs up there saying, you know, no trucks over this amount of, of empty weight can go down here, then how do we police the situation where the, just the cab itself is being parked down there? And the drivers are sleeping down there.
Um, it's, it's tricky, Ms. Behringer, because we don't technically have, um, we don't have jurisdiction on Calabar Street. Um, that, that street, I'm sorry.
Who does?
Well, it's, it's questionable because the street was never accepted to DOT standards and it was not dedicated to the town. So it's, it's a, it's a, an enigma. Um, but it would be the sheriff's department um, would have to be called out um, to there. What we've been trying to do is let Amazon know anytime that happens and they have their patrol that patrols their campus, go across the street and talk to the drivers. So that's how I'm currently have, uh, handling them. And, and I get those emails and calls day, night and weekend. So if you get one, forward it to me. We're used to dealing with those.
We might want to recommend that to Amazon that they put in a sort of three-strike rule with those drivers. After the third one, you get a fine from Amazon. And they're a private company. They can do what they want to do when it comes to their contractors and stuff. I mean, we're, you know, they can do something. Uh, anyway, just an idea.
And there are, there are some new parking signs now along Joan Sausage Road on the west side, I've noticed. I wish, I wish there were more of them. I, I think they're spaced out way too far, but that's just great.
Um, DOT put those in at the interval that they'll allow on a, a road of that classification. But we did, we did have those put in. The other thing too, that's going to change dramatically, Joan Sausage Commerce Park will be in before you, next meeting with um, their, their site plan for their buildings. And once they start doing work out there, that'll change things a lot. And then that will become Wilmington Road um, at Calabar. And so then you're going to have truck traffic. So it's a, some of these things we're doing now will be temporary because we'll have to remove them when that is actually Wilmington's uh, road uh, where trucks will be expected to be on.
And John, will those uh, uh, properties, I know there are driveway cutouts to get to that property. Will they be used for those uh, for this uh, project coming before us?